Good evening, everyone. We will officially call this workshop of Mammoth City Council to order. All members are present. For the workshop, we are going to have a budget presentation on the Department of Public Safety. So Dan, we'll have you kick us off with this item and then we'll dive into it, council. The way that we'll structure this to make the best use of our time is you'll see in the presentation, it's broken up by different divisions. So you have your police department, you have code enforcement, health, you have fire marshal, et cetera. And so what we'll do is after each division, we'll give an opportunity where council will open it up to any comments or questions at that point, and then we'll continue on with the presentation. So Dan, with that, turn it over to you.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. So, oh, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the first of what we presume will be at least five budget presentations, budget workshops. We wanted to start with public safety. That is obviously the biggest department in the city. About half of our employees are in public safety. Just, and I'll mention this during city manager report here in a little bit, but the plan is next Monday, an hour before PD and Z, we'll have the budget presentation for development services. And then the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be July 7th, and that'll be Public Works. Then July 14th, that'll be a meeting before PD and Z again for administration and legal. And then the final one, July 21st, Personnel and Finance. Then probably shortly thereafter, we'll have our annual budget, you know, town hall, where we can kind of go through everything. If you, just to kind of set the stage, what we're trying to get to is August 1st, by charter, we need to have a draft budget to you. So that's why we're starting as early as we are. The budget itself has to be adopted by October 1. So I think I mentioned to several of y'all, Chief Trailer had a death in the family, family emergency, so he could not be with us tonight. So keep your prayers with him and his family. But our Assistant Chief, Rick Alvarado, is miked up and ready to go for tonight. So he's, like you said, Mayor, he's gonna go through each of the divisions, one by one, and then we'll kind of take a pause. So the first one being the police department is obviously the biggest one, and nearest and dearest to his heart. So Chief, if you're ready.
All right. Good evening. I promised Chief Trailer I wouldn't go off a script too much. When he presented this to me, I said, hey, you know, I like to talk. So it's not that. I appreciate the opportunity. So good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Rick Alvarado. I'm with the Assistant Chief of Police for the Mammoth Police Department. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening and present proposed 2026 budget on behalf of our public safety. I'd like to begin by sincerely thanking City Manager Dan Johnson, as well as our Director of Public Safety, Keith Trailer, for their trust and support and allowing me to present this on behalf of Chief Trailer's absence tonight. Also behind me, I have a multitude of individuals that are here to assist in case there's any questions that are outside of my depth. So, all right, we'll kick it off.
Hey, Chief, could you pull the microphone a little bit down and closer there? Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me now? All right. Services of the department, and this is for the police department, provide professional, courteous, and prompt service to the community, ensure safety to all those who reside and travel through the city, enforce the laws and ordinances of the state and the city, and provide disaster assistance and relief in the event of a catastrophic event. So for the police, budget presentation for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026. So our overview, the police department is dedicated to protecting life and property, maintaining public order, and enhancing the quality of life for all residents through community-oriented policing. By building trust and fostering strong partnerships within the community, the department works to ensure a safe and secure environment for everyone. With a commitment to integrity, accountability, professionalism, the police department provides a wide range of law enforcement services, including emergency response, crime prevention, investigations, traffic safety, and public outreach. Officers are trained to respond effectively to incidents while demonstrating fairness, respect, and compassion. The department emphasizes proactive policing strategies, data-driven decision-making, and continual training to stay ahead of evolving public safety challenges. Community engagement remains a cornerstone of operations, ensuring that the voices of residents are heard and valued in shaping local public safety priorities. The key responsibilities of the police department is responding to emergency and non-emergency calls for service, preventing and investigating crimes, enforcing local, state, and federal laws, promoting traffic safety, and enforcing roadway regulations, engaging in community outreach, education, and youth programs, supporting victims of crime, and maintaining public trust. The police department is committed to serving with honor and ensuring a safe, inclusive, and thriving community for all. So our accomplishments and goals, so our goals in this future coming up, add necessary personnel, add necessary support personnel to the department, bring back the Citizens Police Academy to strengthen community engagement, continued citizen outreach programs, continue the department training and education, reduce crime in high-profile areas, utilizing specific data to target these areas and specialized personnel, reduce traffic accidents, utilizing data to confront reckless driving habits. Some accomplishments that we've already been striving and making is, well, in the process right now, is complete the police department build, added command staff, we added two cadet positions to continue annually, filled open patrol vacancies, purchased necessary equipment to enhance work performance, and continued community outreach. So last year in numbers, during the same period, there was a 24% increase in reports filed for various criminal activities. Arrests rose by 36%, which is consistent with the increase in traffic stops, as many arrests are initiated during these stops. Driving while intoxicated, our DWI arrest, showed an overall increase of 44% since the year 2021. Narcotics-related arrests initially increased through 2023, but have decreased by 9% compared to our 2021 levels. And there's a, Chief Trailer did a good job of including a graph with the different statistics included in those. So our activity measures, as you can see on the activity measures, the rise and fall, and the continued rise as far as our calls for service have gone. We have our 2025 actual numbers, where our calls for service are around 27,514, but we're estimated to be in the 41,271. Our traffic stops, it just kind of goes as far as like our trend. We just added our traffic control division, which those numbers should be increasing. So these are just our estimates as we've been going through the year. Our arrests are currently at 267, projected to be around 400. Our warrant services is attributed to our Criminal Investigation Division, as well as the other divisions within our agency of being a lot more proactive. So our warrant services have gone up. We're currently at 48, which is a rise from 2023 and 2024. And we're looking at the end of the year proposing the 72. Case reports are generated. We're currently at 656 and projected to be about 984. Also, you can see the rise in our projected rates for our crash investigations due to all the construction going on on 288 and 6. We're trying to take a really proactive response to that with our data-driven policing and statistics that we're getting on a daily and weekly basis. So for the 25, 26, the 25, 26 police requests for our patrol division, we're looking at three replacement vehicles for our current patrol fleet, three additional units. Our portable radios increased by eight, body cameras increased to eight, and a new inclusion of the ballistic helmets. Right now, us having the 36 officers on the streets, that's what we're projected for the new ballistic helmets, and then including an additional small radar trailer. Our police equipment request for our Criminal Investigation Division, there's a pretty lengthy list of things that we'd like as an addition for our Criminal Investigation Division. A lot of these ideas and concepts on this equipment request for the Criminal Investigation Division itself have come from crime scene technicians locally in the Pearland area, Angleton area, as well as speaking with our Texas Ranger, who we work very closely with in several of our investigations. It's not that, it's not that this hasn't been a priority in the past, but looking forward into the future, these are some purchases that can get our Criminal Investigation Division with hopefully a new crime scene technician. This would put us ahead of the curve into the future as far as those equipment requests. And then let's continue on the next page. The following page is for our special response team. We currently have five members on the special response team, which due to our standards for the team, we're looking at that number to increase this year for our next tryout. And these are some of the things that we would need to make sure that we ensure that all of those officers that are assigned to that special response team have the proper equipment and training to do their missions. Our community relations, some of the requests for Ms. Carl Lacy, if you haven't met her, she's one of the nicest people I've ever met in my entire life. These things would help her in fulfilling her role with the 32-inch TV with the stand. As far as the language, as far as the swag is, the things that she likes to give out whenever we're doing our trunk-or-treat events, our Easter events, all of that stuff. She really engages with the community and children. This would help her in completing her task and her mission on a day-to-day basis, as well as the folding table to help her with her presentations. We kind of, she utilizes the one in CID and anything that she has available whenever she goes to these elementary, junior highs and high schools to do her presentations. Another big area for our agency going into this next year is for our training and our firearms. This includes some specialized stuff. One of our big things that we had the, we had the opportunity to do this year was send two of our guys at Gracie Combatives to get our ground tactics and our ground fighting to more standardize, like protocol, that a lot of law enforcement agencies across the nation are really going towards, like the days of the police academy with the PPCT and the face strikes and a lot of the outdated tactics where this Gracie Combatives is a lot more inclusive, is a lot more user-friendly, and it's pretty tried and true throughout the United States as far as for officers. We've also included some more specialized training for our Criminal Investigation Division, including a jujitsu mat for those two that we've already sent through our Gracie Combatives training and some miscellaneous training, some homicide investigation conferences, our Crimes Against Children Conference, also our firearms training. This year, TCO, it used to be TCO standards for our firearm was one qualification a year. This past year, in legislation, they've included that law enforcement agencies need to have a total of four quarterly qualifications with two firearms qualifications a year. But on the books, per TCO, we're required now to, as a law enforcement agency, to be at the range at least four days a year. Now, how that's broken up is dependent on the law enforcement agency itself. A lot of what we're doing and trying to emulate and follow is two trainings and two firearms qualifications with a low-light, no light, with a low-light shooting to implement into our standards. So some of this equipment would further assist in stretching out our annual, I mean, our ammunition budget, whereas right now, I mean, a case of 223 or a case of 9mm fluctuates depending on what's going on internationally with us putting in for the Glock 44 pistols, which is a 22 conversion for a Glock, where that ammunition's a lot more user-friendly. We have a lot more time behind the trigger and a lot more training for our law enforcement officers. The 25, 26 personnel request, this is something I know that Chief Trailer is really near and dear to him as far as us having the blessing of the new facility that's going to be opening up within the next couple of weeks or months. But one thing that he is really stressed upon with this budget is making sure that we have the personnel to be able to utilize that facility to its full strength and how it can better serve our community. So we're looking for four additional, so totally right, so total right now, we're at around 50 employees, and we're hoping to add in additional 16 to the personnel side. If you can kind of see the chart, it's not, we're not requesting for 16 additional patrol officers. The 16 that we're requesting serve a multitude of the different divisions. For the four patrol officers, two of the patrol cadets, an additional criminal investigator, an evidence forensic technician, an additional records management or records clerk, communication supervisor, a jail supervisor, jail supervisor, four of the jail staff, one custodian. Like I said, that would, that would increase our overall personnel to 67. So in summary, our Criminal Investigation Division is seeking the 13,000 for forensic equipment for the patrol division with the patrol units and equipment. Our special response team for equipment, our community relations, equipment and community outreach, training courses and equipment, firearms training for ammunition and materials, new personnel with our total being at the 2,103,000.
Fantastic. Take a breath now.
Yeah.
You did great presenting that. That was a lot of information, a lot of detailed information. Thank you, Chief, Chief Trailer. And Michelle, I know you had a big part to play in putting that together, too, and we appreciate you guys. What we'll do, council, is we'll start from left to right. So Councilman Bonner, we'll start with you for any questions and/or comments, but let's make sure to keep in mind that we have other divisions to get through here. So Councilman Bonner, we'll start with you, sir.
I really don't have any questions.
If you could unmute, Councilman. Thank you.
Sorry. I do this every week. I really don't have any questions. The data's there, and I just need time to go over it. I don't see anything that's just glaring out there that, that I didn't expect to see. We built a brand-new place. We've got to stock it and staff it. The four officers, I don't think that's out of line at all either. So I'd just like some time to go over the data and take a look at what we've got.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lance?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My questions are a little, just information. You've mentioned the DWI increase. Do you know if that's, it's, I'm just curious, is that from the new restaurants or bars in the area, or is this just random people driving down the road under the influence? Do we, can we pinpoint where this increased activity is coming from?
Yes, sir. I mean, with our, with our increased activity of being on the highway, being vigilant, being proactive, it's pretty much the law of diminishing returns out of, during a weekend night, I mean, with Pearland being close by and 288 and Highway 6, if we can get our officers available, if we have the staffing for our officers to go out and be proactive in the community, to try to limit the amount of crashes that they're working on 288 and Highway 6, well, then we see those rises coming from that aspect of it.
I'm kind of wondering, like, could we, is there anything glaring, like, okay, this, this bar over here, we're getting a lot of DWIs out of this bar. I mean, is anything like that that's?
No, sir. No, sir, not at this time.
And the warrant increases, they seem to be going up quite a bit. Is that just because we're gonna have more police officers?
So the warrant increase from formerly managing the Criminal Investigation Division, I believe it was several months ago, we kind of came up with our flow charts with the increases that we've had in our shoplifting with the inclusion of HEB, and then with our construction material thefts. So y'all gave us the opportunity to be able to run some of these specialized operations where we were able, we were able to get into the neighborhoods, be proactive, be able to go door-to-door and get information on individuals. And with our Criminal Investigation Division, with the utilization of the flock camera system, it gives our investigators the opportunity to go out and be able to close out some of these calls for service to where we're able to get a warrant and get those warrants executed.
Okay. The ballistic helmets, so we don't have any at this point?
The special response team currently has the ballistic capabilities with the ballistic helmet, because that's limited just to the special response team at this point in time. So again, trying to be proactive and making sure that our guys are equipped to confront anything that might, that might likely?
Absolutely.
Them come across, that's the implementation for that.
Like riot-style or SWAT-style?
SWAT-style, yes, sir.
Okay. Last question, the Gracie Combatant, a Gracie Combatant, would that be like sergeants going to that, or is this just regular patrol officers be going to that?
So currently, right now, we have one of our senior patrol officers that's over the traffic, that's in, that's within the traffic division, and then also one of our special response team members. They both showed a great interest in it. Several months ago, we had the opportunity to bring down the Victoria County Sheriff's Office, their four GST instructors, and watching the, watching the class and watching the participation of those officers, those were the two shining stars out of the courses that we put on. Also, those officers take time upon themselves to go and, and work on their Gracie Jiu-Jitsu stuff outside of the workplace. So that was a huge glaring difference between them and some of our officers, but hopefully we can get that contagious throughout our, our agency.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Lance. Councilman Opelgar?
Afternoon, Chief. How are you?
I'm good, sir.
So the, to start off, the small radar trailer, is that like the one we already have?
Yes, sir. That would be an additional to the two that we have.
Did you just deploy them around town?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then I guess with the, with the, with the new station, the 16 people, that's all directly related to the new station?
Yes, sir.
That's a has-to-have?
Yes, sir.
Has-to-have.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. And that's 2 million. And so that 2 million, is that all just, is that everything included, everything you talked about, or just the staffing?
I don't want to talk out of context, but that's with staffing and equipment, I believe, sir. Yes, sir, that's the total with the personnel and all the equipment associated. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, that's, you know, I know we got a beautiful new police station. We're gonna need people to work it, especially in the jail.
Yes, sir.
So it may not be enough people.
Correct.
Right. It's a good place to start, though.
But we're good stewards, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Manager Dan?
Mayor, I was just gonna add, Rosie and I were talking before, I believe that is, that's salary only right now, right, Rosie? We still need to add in the benefits. So the 2.1 is going to, it's gonna be more than that once we add in all the benefits, if all this is approved. So we'll have an updated number. What's that? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Manager Dan. Chief, appreciate this, this overview here. I think, you know, doing these, starting these two years ago, doing them each year, while we haven't been able to give every department everything that y'all need, it's important for us to understand the direction that we need to head to get to where we want to go. Few quick questions here, and I know, Manager Dan, I want to dive in with you and Chief Trailer into some of the activity measures year over year. Rosie, this will be a question for you. The 225,000 that's proposed for vehicle replacements, that would come from our vehicle replacement fund, not from the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Chief, I noticed that we're proposing hiring four new patrol officers, but there's only an allocation of three new patrol units. Would we have two people that would just be doubling up, or would we need to allocate an acquisition of four patrol units?
So I have the perfect person to answer that question, sitting in the front row, Captain Dave?
Welcome, Captain. Good to see you.
How y'all doing today?
Doing good. Thank you for being here.
So generally, patrol officers don't live within the take-home ride circle, so it's two officers for each patrol car.
Okay.
So if there's four officers, then we only need two cars.
Okay.
Supervisors and specialized units, that's whenever we get into the take-home rides.
Okay. And so Captain Dave, real quick, I'm not sure if you can speak to this, then. If we're hiring four, being proposed to hire four new patrol officers, but there's only three new vehicles, is one being proposed as a take-home vehicle for somebody that's currently on staff? Because if you're saying that we need two per one, I would expect to see two new patrol units here.
So there's people that we hired in this go-around that we're gonna have to have a vehicle for.
Okay.
So one of them is the cadet, and then another one. So?
Okay, perfect.
Vehicle is needed, and then three of them are replacements.
Okay, perfect. That makes sense, then. Thank you, sir. The last question that I have, then, just a comment. I believe, so within this current year's budget, we have allocated funding for two cadets, and we've been bringing those people on as we, as we get them. And so what's being proposed from a personnel perspective is that we just, we keep the funding there to continue to backfill those two cadet positions.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, Chief or Dan, one of you guys might be able to speak to this, but it's more so just a comment, is we've always talked about uniforms and how at some point I'd love to make sure that every officer, every year, has a uniform allocation within the budget. Public Works rents their uniforms, so it's a little bit different, whereas police have to buy their uniforms. Is that something that's being looked at or contemplated? Because I know we give money for new officers when they come on to help them a little bit, but for y'all that have been here for a while, do you guys get an allocation every year of money that you can use, or is that just for new officers that come on?
Ms. Michelle?
So typically, on new hires, they get, correct me if I'm wrong, Captain, but they get sent off for uniforms, but when an officer needs a new uniform, it just comes out, if we have the money, we get it. If not, they don't get it.
Okay.
And we have a uniform budget usually covers new hires and replacement uniforms.
And replacement uniforms. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. I know in years past, it was always a little, a little tight, and that's something that's been discussed in the past. So as long as the money's there to make sure that we have those replacements, because if you guys get in a situation, your uniform gets messed up, you need a new one, I would hate for the city to be saying, oh, you have to take that out of your own paycheck. I believe as a city, we should, we should cover that cost. So?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman, Roevee Robinson, over to you now.
I just have one question on the Training and Firearms page, number 14. It says Alvin Community College K Building.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you just elaborate on that?
Yeah, so the Alvin Community, they have a facility. So we're not at the level of HPD where they have their own training city. The best thing that we have locally within our community is the Alvin Community College. They have a K building. It used to be the old communication to be the old communications where they used to do radio broadcasting. They have since then converted that over for our alert training, our active shooter response, to where within that K building itself, they emulate a bar, they emulate classrooms, they emulate all types of different structures, all within that same facility. And whenever we utilize that for our alert for our alert training, or any of our CQ, our close quarters training that we do as a law enforcement agency, we utilize that facility to give us a real-world application versus setting it up at the range using two-by-fours or make-believe stuff that that building we utilize. We rent it out from them. We call ahead of time, hey, is anybody using it? Because a lot of the local law enforcement agencies, Lake City, they have an agreement with them, Alvin themselves, Pearland, all the all the law enforcement agencies in the surrounding area, they check that building out so that they can complete their alert training or any of their CQB training.
Okay. And then on page 15, the Personnel Request, I was just curious. So there's no currently, there's no forensic technician or records manager?
No, no, ma'am. So our CID investigators do a great job of teamwork and using experience and trial for us to be able to to manage those major scenes themselves.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Portem?
Howdy, Chief.
Howdy.
Getting used to calling you Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so not to put you on the spot, but putting you on the spot. In the last year, has there been a situation where you guys didn't have the funding or budget for something that was crucial?
No, we have a great partnership with our city manager and y'all to provide us what we need whenever we need it.
Okay, so based on the budget that we approved last year, there was never a situation where it went over budget or you guys were not able to get it?
That would be outside of my realm. And Ms. Michelle?
No issues.
No issues.
No issues. Okay, so that's a good sign. So that means that historically, you guys have had everything you need when asked, if requested. Looking at this, clearly, it's it's a lot to digest. It's a lot of numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're growing so fast. I'm afraid that with this growth, we might be missing some key things. Not to be funny, but why is there no Glocks on here?
There's some.
I saw the six hours.
Say it one more time?
I'm just kidding. The Glocks. I saw the handguns. I was like, how come?
Oh, yeah. So our special so our special response team, we had a great partnership with a couple of distributors. So myself, as well as the team leaders, actually had several different platforms at the firing range, and that's what the team consensus was. I was Team Glock prior to our SIGs, so.
All right, just friendly banter here.
And also being good stewards, we also tried out several 2011s, but that was about 1,100 on top of what we were getting. So we try to be good stewards and one with the six hours.
Great answer. All right. So that's really the biggest thing for me. I'm looking at this. I've looked over it quite a bit, and nothing seems outrageous. For me, the biggest thing is that you guys have what you need medically, equipment, tools, personnel, all the key things, and that you guys feel valued, that you have the training, that you have the cadets. The last two years, it seems like we've done a great job doing that. I think that you guys, the leadership, have done a phenomenal job in keeping there and staying within budget and being good stewards. And I think our taxpayers appreciate that. So thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
But if ever anything hits a wall and you guys feel like there's resistance, you know, we definitely want to hear about that, or if there's an area that you have to reallocate budget for, that you need more approval for, please feel free to come, because we want to make sure that you guys are funded properly with excellence.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Councilman Hudson?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you, Councilman. I do want to give Councilman-elect Rossi Knox, do you have any questions? And this is a little bit unique. Usually, we would have the budget presentation with the the new council members sworn in, so we're doing a little bit of hybrid right now, just to make sure that he's that he's involved in the process.
Looking at the the numbers here for the Personnel Request, where do y'all get the these from? Like, is the four new ones, is that based on population growth?
Yes.
Or is that the need for the new facility?
That's with the population growth, as well as the new. So it's it's in conjunction with one another. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman-elect. All right, Chief, on to the Fire Marshal's Office. Great job. And I'm sure there might be a circle back in the future, but we'll move we'll continue moving on now.
All right. So the Fire Marshal's Office, the Fire Marshal's Office is responsible for safeguarding lives, property, and the environment through fire prevention, inspection, investigation, and public education. As a key division within public safety, the office plays a proactive role in reducing fire risk and ensuring compliance with fire codes and regulations. The Fire Marshal oversees fire safety inspections for commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential properties to ensure buildings meet local and state fire codes. The office also reviews building plans and fire protection systems for new construction and renovations, ensuring fire safety is built into every stage of development. In the event of a fire, the Fire Marshal conducts thorough investigations to determine the cause and origin, working closely with law enforcement and other agencies when needed. Key responsibilities: reviewing building plans and fire protection systems for code compliance, conducting fire safety inspections and code enforcement, investigating the cause and origin of fires, issuing permits related to fire safety, e.g., fire alarm sprinklers, special events, educating the public and businesses on fire prevention and emergency preparedness. Accomplishments and goals: the accomplishments, hired a full-time fire inspector, fire inspector, implemented an annual inspection slash occupancy survey program, collaborated with the Manville Police Department to teach fire investigation class for the Teen Citizen Police Academy, revised FMO fee schedule, required the Blue Beam software program to conduct electric plan review, increased in-house and external training for staff and leadership. Goals: to continue updating the process and procedures for the Fire Marshal's Office, implement ESO properties and inspections, work with city departments to schedule training courses such as fire extinguisher training, CPR, and other classes. Transfer of records to an electronic format, maintain and review process time of seven to 10 business days or less, maintain an inspection request time of five, one to five business days or less, continue to work with the Manville Police Department on training classes and information, update and revision of the DCM, update and revise the city ordinances, maintain in-house external training for staff and leadership, and update Fire Marshal's Office webpage. Activity measures: the performance measures from 2024, with inspections being at 144, and currently, they're already above that, and this was calculated by May of this year, up to 206, with the estimate closing the year out at 412. The permits issued at 151 were projected at 302. Certificate of occupancy issued, we're currently at 46. This was again, was in May, and we're looking at 92. Plan reviews were projected to be at 192. Investigations, we're currently at nine and projected to be around 18. And public education and community outreach, currently, we've had three, an estimate to be at six by the end of this calendar year. So equipment requests for the Fire Marshal's Office, they're requesting for a fire extinguisher training system of the low end of 14,000 and the high end to Personnel requests for the Fire Marshal's Office, they're requesting for an administrative clerk to handle the administration slash office duties with the Fire Marshal's Office, receive and process permits pertaining to the Fire Marshal, receive requests for inspections, distribute plan reviews to the proper personnel, data input, limit plan review, community outreach, and track and required for continuing education, with a salary range from 33,000 to 48,000. So in summary, the Fire Marshal is seeking for 30,000 in training equipment and the addition of an administrative clerk.
All right. Thank you, Chief. We'll start from right to left. Councilman Hudson, any questions from you, sir?
No questions.
Questions. Mayor Portem?
No questions.
One question that that I do have regarding the, where is it here? The fire extinguisher training system. Can we get a little bit of insight into what exactly that is?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Shawna, our Fire Marshal, thank you for being here tonight, ma'am.
So a few months ago, Chad came to me and said, hey, we want to start putting together some programs. One of the major things we want for our city buildings is a fire extinguisher training program. And if I'm going to do a program, I'm going to go all out. So I'm like, no, we need a fire prevention and education and extinguishing program. With that being said, I began putting together the program. Each department will come through. The system that we have now, we were able to borrow a $30,000 system from one of our neighboring departments. That allowed us their training equipment, and this is going to be a live-fire training equipment, which means we have to follow all NFPA rules for a live-fire. The the system that we have has like seven fire extinguishers, so it gives you real-world, real-life training. There's actual fire, and it's controlled through a control whoever's on the other end is going to control what level of fire, what type of fire. So when you're in the classroom portion, you'll learn what your A, B, C, D, and K extinguishers are for. Then you'll kind of be tested before you go out and given some scenarios. Then when you go out, you'll actually be fighting these fires with a pressurized fire extinguisher. So it's filled with air and water, but it simulates the fire extinguishing agent. That, for I sure know, was a $30,000 system. There are some electronic systems that you can get, and those range from about 14,500 to up to the 30,000, and it depends on how how much equipment you get with them. So we can have a stove fire, we can have a trash can fire, we can have an electrical fire. So each piece is going to increase the cost of the system because you're getting more of the equipment. So it's really that real hands-on. I believe that we practice what we preach. You know, if we're going to play a game, if we practice, when we go to play the game, we're going to know what we're doing. So that's that is what that system is for, also for the props to be incorporated with that training.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that overview. Shawna, please express our appreciation to the neighboring city that's allowed us to use their training program. Love it that, you know, safety is one of our core values, and you guys are fulfilling that there. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Opeliger?
I guess getting old, because we used to just watch a film and then go out with a a burn pan and and blast the fire and call it good. So it's a little more sophisticated.
Yes, we did. Unfortunately, NFPA 1550 came up with a bunch of new rules and said, hey, you got to do all of this stuff for your what you're wearing. So you've got to change, you know, you got to have gear for what you're wearing. You got to have masks, got to be on SCBA, all kind of things, because it's now considered live-fire training. We just took a bucket and put some diesel in and fuel in it and lit it off, and all had fun putting it out. But now, you know, we're having to do a safer training, and so we're using the wat pressurized water instead of the actual agent that is that could suffocate you. It's an affixant. So we're doing things cleaner and cleaner and healthier now.
So do you offer that to businesses where the business people can?
So right now, it's only for the city, but absolutely, our goal is to open it up to businesses. And with the hiring of the new inspector that we have, that is going to be part of his role. We've already hired him. It's already been budgeted, I believe, when I came on back in October of '24. So we were just able to fill that in January. That's why our numbers have increased the way that they have, because we're actually out there getting those inspections done. But part of his job is to be helping with the public education and training.
So y'all don't need another new vehicle?
No, we don't right now, because we're wanting an administrative person at this point, because right now, I'm pretty much the administrative person, and I'm in the field, and we're training the new person, and it's a lot. And I'm not in the field as much as I would like. And so with that person, that would help us a lot.
A lot?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lance?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Of course, my question's a little bit different, like always, but in this may, I'm assuming this is going to fall on this question will fall under your realm, but I understand that if we need a tall ladder truck, we call Pearland, correct?
So we have automatic aid with several of our surrounding fire departments, and that automatic aid is going to send out whatever we request. So I'm not, I know that there are intentions for the Manville Fire Department to get a quint, but I don't know where they are with that. I know it takes a lot of money and time and
Sure.
research. So that is part of their plan. But for now, yes, we rely on our mutual aid responding.
Do you know if there's any ongoing training with the local fire departments? Like if just check the response time or whatever with the with the ladder truck that we need? Is there any training going on?
There may be, and unfortunately, I wouldn't know, because we're a separate entity. So we don't.
That's what I kind of thought. Maybe. It's not really under your realm, but.
Yeah, it's not not something that we.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Lance, there is a meeting potentially this Wednesday with ESD III, so that might be the perfect opportunity, Manager Dan, to see if Councilman's available, or at least get some of those questions, and the staff can ask them. So, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bonner?
Yes, ma'am. On the investigations, is that arson or?
So that's all of the fire investigations. Some of them can be as simple as an outside trash can fire. That the guys are, all the volunteers are really well-trained, and so they don't call us out a lot. If they really need some help, they have fire investigators.
That was what I was wondering. Is arson underneath ESD III right now?
It is under us. Any arson is going to go through the Fire Marshal's Office, period. So anything of suspicious nature is going to come through the Fire Marshal's Office.
So that's why I wonder when we start talking about personnel and looking forward as we grow and businesses start coming in, that seems to be sometimes the major target of arsonists, is are we thinking ahead now that at some point we need to have an arson investigator?
Well, right now, we currently have two. And the fire inspector that we have, we are going to send him to school for fire investigations, but we want to get that administrative person in to kind of help us out. Then we can have that third, we're going to come back and beg again. Don't worry. We're going to beg next year for that for that next person to come in and, yes, to help with those investigations.
Yeah, because I have a dreaded fear that five, six years down the line, as things grow and grow, and as the county grows, ESD III is not going to be able to be our fire department anymore.
I have a feeling that they are eventually going to have to go into a professional or paid department, yes.
And then if we've got these things in in-house already, it's not as big a a management problem.
Absolutely. And so that that will be our ask for next budget year would be to add an additional fire inspector and investigator. Fortunately for us, they can do those both. It's the on-call that we are going to going to need the help with, because these things often, if it's arson, it's happening in the middle of the night, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. So to have someone available to go out for those.
Now, the fire extinguisher training system, having done that for about, starting in 1970, and doing that all the way up until the last five or six years, I kind of lean toward the electronic, simply because the people that you're going to be training are going to be, I mean, the whole idea of fire extinguisher training was typically the office locations. And there was a reason for that, is because as soon as you train somebody how to put a fire out, they want to put every fire out. And that's the biggest thing that you probably find is training is the step-back-and-run. When do you do that?
Right.
You know, that's the first thing in the in the training program. So I kind of lean towards the electronic. It still teaches you how to put out a fire and the different types of fire, but it it doesn't leave that that thought in everybody's head that, oh, if one of Robbie's diesels catches fire, we're going to stand over there and fight that.
All right. And that's the reason why I pushed for a little more time to give that that classroom education first, and then go outside and do the actual fire. I haven't done the training with the electronic yet.
Really good.
I've seen it out, but I haven't really put my hands on it.
I mean, you're actually using a a fire extinguisher. It just has a little blinking light on the front of it that corresponds to the screen you're shooting at. So the targeting and the sweeping and everything that you're teaching
Yeah.
works the same way as a live one, and you don't have to breathe the the stuff.
Yes.
You don't have to worry about clothing, any of that. And you can do it in, we could do it right here.
Yes. So then the intent is to go to something that is safer. I just haven't properly vetted the systems yet. I just, you know, kind of grew up on, you know, what Councilman Opeliger was saying, and then now going to.
I was right there, too.
Okay, so going to this system, you know.
I taught at Texas A&amp;M, so we were we were fighting it without some equipment.
So for me, it's just kind of, okay, how does how do how does everyone react versus feeling that heat and you turning your back, and it comes back to you?
Yeah.
If it's on one of these systems, that's a live fire system versus if you turn your back to this electronic system, it's just that you don't know. So I'm going to vet it and really see. I haven't had a chance, but I'm glad you brought that up because it makes a really good point.
And one of the things, and I don't know since the ruling changed, maybe you could have a class the first time to where they, Pasadena Fire Department used to come out and actually put that training on. So I know they have that equipment to do that. Some of the other ones around may have it too, but you could do it the first year to get that feeling you're talking about and then go to the electronic.
Yeah, that, well, that's exactly what we're doing. So the city of Texas City allowed us to borrow their system and said, hey, you know, we just built a whole new training field. So you guys use it how you like.
I just worry about injuries doing the live fire training.
So there are, the three of us will be there. So myself, the assistant fire marshal, and the investigator. The investigator is a professional firefighter and paramedic. And so we've all been kind of.
I know, but the people that you're going to be training, they have it.
Right. But that's why we're going to get them inside first. And then by the time they get outside, I mean, I would love for you to see it. The props that I am creating for them indoors, they're going to be prepared to go outside and do that fire. So spending a lot of time on that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ruby Robinson, any comments or questions from you?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Elect? Nope, no questions.
I have a comment.
We have one final comment from the Mayor Protem.
You're amazing. That's it. I'm just so thankful that, you know, Chief brought you on. And they're really crushing it with staffing and the employees. And it shows. And it's, it's a world of a difference from two years ago. And you are such a professional and a rock star. And I just wanted to honor you with that because you really, really, really have just lifted the bar high. And when people have came back and mentioned things they weren't happy with, I'm like, she's doing her job. And I'm thrilled. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Definitely.
All right, thank you, Shawna. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Chief, back over to you for the next division.
Good job, good job. All right. So code enforcement. So some key responsibilities for our code enforcement division. We have public safety enforcing building and property maintenance. Codes help protect the well-being of residents and prevents hazardous condition, conditions, property values, community cohesion, and public education. Code enforcement is not just about regulation. It's about building safe, vibrant, and resilient neighborhoods through education, fairness, and a strategic plan. So the city code enforcement division is made up of two employees currently. The lead code enforcement, code enforcement officer and the health inspector. Code enforcement enforces city codes. The health inspections are responsible for inspections for food services. So some accomplishments from 2025. Provide a response and expedient service to all. Always present a professional attitude and image conveying respect and sincerity. They've been practicing great communication skills. This includes listening and reiterate, and reiterate for accuracy and clarity on information exchange. Offer opinions, resources, and solutions when initiating enforcement actions. Be open and creative to alternative solutions or within the law. They educate the customer to clearly communicate the issues involved and our expectations, goals, and timeframe for necessary actions. Continued on the goals from '25 to '26. Promote voluntary compliance. Encouraging property owners and residents to comply with local codes through education, communication, and community engagement before pursuing formal enforcement actions. Protect public and, public health and safety. Supporting neighborhood revitalization, which in turn work collaboratively with residents, neighborhood groups, and other city departments to improve property conditions and contributed to community beautification and stability. Enhance public awareness. Respond properly and professionally to complaints. Maintain accurate and timely documentation. Develop ongoing professional skills and foster interdepartmental collaboration. So last year in numbers, the last year's in numbers as well as this year. Calls for service currently, again, these were, this data was pulled in May of this year. 900 calls for service estimated to be at 1,800. Self-initiated calls for service, they're currently at 300, which they're closely gaining on that to the end of the year, projected to be within 600. Their health inspections, they're currently at 277, which again, this was conducted at the end of May. So they're 77 ahead of what they've done previously in 2024 and way above what they did in 2023. So great job to those individuals within this public safety aspect. Code inspections, stop work orders. Yeah, code inspections, they're at 900, looking to be around 1,800 by the end of this year. Stop work orders, they're at 45 currently and projected to be around 90 if given the same data, if it continues throughout the rest of the year with the trend. Code violations, they're currently at 448, estimated to be at 896. And assisting in other departments, they're currently at 24 and estimated to be roughly around the same number as 2024. So equipment requests for the code enforcement. They're requesting for additional money for uniforms and miscellaneous equipment. Also requesting a code enforcement officer enforced, that enforces city codes and focus on health inspections and investigations. And with the addition of that employee that they're requesting, they're also requesting for a vehicle for that employee. So in summary, for code enforcement, equipment around 2,000 for the purchase of a new vehicle, 55,000 uniform replacement and for the new employee, looking at 2,000. And personnel for a code enforcement slash health officer at 56,000 annually.
All right, thank you, Chief. Council, what we'll do is we'll open up questions for this division. And then we'll take a pause to then head into our regular meeting. We'll get Councilman Elect sworn in. And then before we head into the executive session, we'll cover the rest of the divisions. So Councilman Lance, we'll start with you this time for any questions or comments regarding code enforcement.
Thank you.
All right. One comment and one question that I have for code enforcement. One of the things that I would love to see, and I think our code enforcement does a great job. And I love the way that they work to educate the public. It's not just a heavy-handed approach of, we're just going to fine you and force you into compliance, but we want to work and we want to educate. And I love that approach. I'd really like to see for some of the goals where they will transition as we move forward to be data-driven goals. You know, how many, what is our turnaround time when a complaint gets called in? For when we're promoting voluntary compliance, what is the end result of that? Are we effective in that? Or how many times does it actually convert to be something where we have to issue a citation? Seeing some of those metrics will be key. And then a question that I have, if we're going to be potentially retiring three police vehicles, purchasing three replacements, would it not make sense to repurpose one of those older police vehicles for code enforcement rather than buying a new one for 55,000?
I think for the safety and secure, I don't know if I'm speaking out of depth, but go ahead, sir.
Captain Day, welcome back.
So right now, the three that we're looking to replace have over 120,000 miles and are costing more to maintain than they're worth.
Okay.
So it's not feasible.
Sounds good. Thank you, Captain. That's all that I have. Thank you, Chief. Mayor Protem's out, so we'll go to Councilman Hudson next. Any questions or comments?
Really, no questions, but just to say y'all are doing a heck of a job.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ruby Robinson?
No questions.
No questions. Councilman Oplager?
More, so we need another health code inspector, probably.
Yes, sir.
Probably a pretty good idea with the growth that we're having.
Yes, sir.
Probably needs some help finding the guy that's putting up all the RV, I buy RV signs too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bonner?
I don't know how to top that. I think y'all are doing a great job in code enforcement right now. So I, I see the need for additional people. I'm not sure one is enough. But we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Elect? Good to go. All right, so we will pause this public safety budget presentation. We'll pick that back up in the regular meeting. Council, let's take about a three to four-minute recess here. And then we will reconvene at right at about 6:00 o'clock to begin the regular meeting. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Manville City Council meeting. We will officially call it to order. We have seven of seven members present. We will start with the invocation, and I have been asked to lead us in the invocation tonight, so if you'll please join me in bowing your heads. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here at City Hall here in the city of Manville. We thank you for the blessings of this city, the homes that it's provided to us, the successful businesses that it's been able to, that have been able to start here in this city. We ask for your wisdom and your grace and your guidance tonight. I thank you for all the citizens, all the people that are here tonight in this room, city employees, business owners, that care deeply about the future of this city. Our heart cry is that may it be in Manville as it is in heaven, and help us be able to fulfill that with every decision that we make tonight. Pray this all in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
And next, you guys get a double dose of me tonight. I have the inspirational reading. So this is a quote that I recently heard from President Theodore Roosevelt on April 23rd, 1910. I'm working hard to memorize it. I'm not there yet, so I'm gonna read some of it, but it's called "The Man in the Arena." It goes, "It's not the critic who counts. It's not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or how the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcomings, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, because who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Thank you, everyone. If you'll please, if you can, please stand and join me in saying the pledges. First to the U.S. flag, I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag, honor-
To the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We have a presentation here first, so let me come around to the front real quick. So this summer, we actually had an individual reach out to us about a potential internship here with the city of Manville. He reached out. He was graduating from the University of Texas in Austin, and so we had to convince our city manager, who's an Aggie, that he would be good to bring on this summer. He's pursuing a career in urban planning and architecture design, and he thought of no better place to come intern than the city of Manville. And so Ethan joined us about two months ago now, and he's been working very hard with myself, with our city manager, with our Development Services Department, learning anything and everything he can about the city, and also contributing to some very important projects. And so we wanted to recognize him tonight and sincerely thank him for his time, energy, and effort during his internship with the city. His positive attitude, eagerness to learn, and support made a real impact on our team. Ethan, we've enjoyed having you with us, and we hope that this experience for you has been as meaningful as your contributions have been here to the city of Manville, and we wish you continued success in all that comes next, and hopefully one day you'll come back here and you'll work for the city of Manville. So Ethan, if you want to come forward and accept this certificate, let's give him a round of applause and make him first time in the city. Now, I gave Ethan a heads up. I usually like to surprise people, but I did tell him that he'd have to say a few words. So what's, what's one thing, Ethan, that you say that you learned during your time here as an intern with this city? How great of a Director Joe's is, right?
Yeah, so, um, as I guess I am kind of a former resident. I live over in Savannah, so it's right outside of the, right outside of the city of Manville, but it's always interesting seeing how it is outside of the city and then coming in here and seeing it for myself how it is in here, especially since I've never really been in any of the meetings before, before this summer. This is like my first meeting I've actually physically been in. So, um, yeah, it's, it's very interesting, very eye-opening to see everything that's going on here.
Ethan, we appreciate you. We wish you the best of luck. Thank you, everyone. So next, we have public comments. We have quite a few people that signed up to speak regarding an item that's on the agenda, so we will withhold your public comment card until we get to that public hearing. Then I'll make sure to call your name out, so that way you have an opportunity to speak. We did have one individual that signed up to speak not pertaining to the public hearing, and that is Mr. David Minsberg. So, Mr. Minsberg, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us what's going on with your project here in Manville.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and update you. I was looking back at my notes of previous, and so I was here March 17th, April 7th, and on May 6th, I was not able to come. I was actually on my way here when there was a flash alert flood, which specifically named Manville. As I was heading out this evening, it started pouring again, and I thought I might have that same situation. So I've looked back on my notes, and so I've tried to address everything as to where we are, because we have made very, very substantial progress in the last 45 days. So I've tried to hit the, the highlights here. In particular, the first thing and probably the most important thing is LJA, our engineers, had a meeting, a pre, I think it's called a pre-development meeting, Dan, with city staff, and they reported that that had gone very well. I don't know how long they were there. Dan was obviously there. I was not present. That was a staff-to-staff meeting. Said it went well. There were a number of questions that they were able to address and get worked out. The preliminary infrastructure as a result of that has now been agreed upon. Again, that's preliminary. Obviously, city will review the final, but that has all now been worked out between city, Keating, and my group. LJA has finalized, you may remember way back when, we had a lot, a lot, a lot of discussion as to what it was all gonna cost. At least the preliminary numbers are in. That has exceeded the original budget. It was a little bit anticipated. All the things that everybody reads about in the news these days has had an impact on us, but it will still enable us to go forward. But we do have, now have that information. We've had a lot of talk here about Textdot and Ingress and Egress. We are continuing to work with Textdot. I don't think it will surprise anyone sitting around this, this horseshoe that Textdot is not always as immediately responsive as they might be, but they have been available to us, and they have been working with us. We are making progress there. It's slow. That's all I can say about that. It's just slow. But Mayor, thank you for joining us in that letter. I think that, you know, from the feedback we're getting, that made a big difference with Textdot. One of the things that, that's essential for us is that we have to have a development agreement between my group and Keating. There's a lot of infrastructure to be put in. We have made, I think we've turned that document between myself and Keating now eight or nine, perhaps 10 times. I just saw an email that says there's another draft. We are, we're not done, but we're somewhere between 96 and 99% done. We anticipate being totally done with that by Friday of this week, working very closely with the Keating people on that. Of particular interest, y'all know and will recall that when Keating was here, one of the things that they have to have is a dealership, a manufacturer. They are way ahead of schedule on that, and they report that they're making very substantial progress on that. They're making sufficient progress that, working with Keating, we have authorized LJA to proceed with construction drawings. So we feel good about the development agreement. They feel good about where they are with the dealership, that we've told LJA to go to, to drawings. One of the issues that, or questions that came up a lot was, where do we stand on the rest of the tract? We continue to have conversations with people on a very frequent basis. There's a high level of interest. At the same time, that high level of interest always concludes the same way, and I've, I've reported this to y'all before, which is, hey, as soon as the overpass is finished, as soon as the underpass is finished, as soon as the infrastructure's in, as soon as we can see exactly what that entryway off of Del Bello looks like, we're ready to go. So there's a lot of folks out there that are interested. As I've said, that is not gonna happen tomorrow, but I think, you know, it's not gonna happen in this calendar year, and it's really not gonna happen in next calendar year. But towards the end of next calendar year, looking at 20, end of '26, early '27 is when I would anticipate, because again, very, very high level of interest. And then lastly, you'll recall on my previous visits, I have provided a timeline. I'm not now gonna provide a bar chart, because now we're into the very technical end of this, and LJA will be, if they haven't already provided it to Dan, they will be providing to Dan the technical timeline from here on. I remain available to come back, address any questions, answer any questions that y'all may have, either here or at any time. I've previously provided my cellphone to everybody. I visit with the mayor. I'm happy to visit with anybody about any questions. Mayor, Council, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minsberg. Appreciate it. Next, we will move on to the city manager update. Manager Dan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you may recall, back in December, we were approached from the Dennis Quaid's Viewpoint television program to put together something for the city of Manville. Basically, whenever they have different shows, there will be a promo for, for different cities of interest across the United States. And so since that time, you know, Council has approved the little bit of budget that we needed for that project. We've had the interviews. I had, if, I don't know if any of y'all got a chance to see the lights set up that they had in this room when we did all the interviews, but anyway, the first draft, I guess, this, this is not the one, the final version, but we did check with them today to make sure that we could show this. I think Blake's got it lined up for us, if y'all would like to see that, Mayor.
Manville is a small rural town that is blossoming to a prosperous city. We were settled in July of 1857, and many people since then have been proud to call Manville home.
The population of the city of Manville, Texas, has more than quadrupled over the past 20 years.
Our city is growing quickly because of its ideal location to downtown Houston, the medical center, and shopping. People love to call Manville home because we are investing in parks, green space, activities, and events. We also offer in our community a slower pace of life, a safe community. People can slow down. They can enjoy their family and take a moment to breathe.
While the community welcomes new residents, it is determined to maintain its comfortable, small-town feel. So the city planners put together a strategic plan to shape the future of this growing city.
The reason we have a strategic plan is to develop a clear vision for our future growth, which includes our residents, our businesses. It's a comprehensive look at our schools, at our parks, at our major thoroughfares, to plan for the future of Manville, which includes our future growth. We've had a family business here for over 35 years, and in the 35 years, we've seen incredible growth from this small rural town to this booming blend of city meets country living, and that has brought great opportunities for all the small businesses, including ours.
This is a great place to grow a small business because of the extreme community and city staff support that we have now.
As we transform from a small town to a much bigger city, we're striving to maintain transparency. We look for input from our citizens. We have public forums. We have meetings where we invite people to come in and give their input. So we try to educate our citizenry on how the city government actually works through emails, through our social media presence, through our website. We try very hard to engage our citizens so that they have input in building their city.
The city of Manville, Texas, is a city on the rise. People are discovering Manville's unique small-town charm and exceptional quality of life. As the city grows, it continues to strengthen its community while honoring its roots and preparing for the future.
With the growth that we've been experiencing in Manville, we recognize that our diversity is our strength. Whether you've lived here your whole life or you just have moved here, the landscape, the scenery, the big beautiful trees that we have, all of these are reasons why people have moved to Manville. They see that we are a family-friendly city, that we prioritize a safe city with strong infrastructure. Most importantly, we want to help our local businesses succeed, and we are proud of them.
Manville is a great place for small businesses to come to because we have such a good community support system and city staff support system.
What I love most about having a business here in Manville is the location, our proximity to Houston. We're only 20 minutes away from the fourth-largest city in the United States, but yet we still get to enjoy that small-town feeling of community and culture that exists here in Manville.
Go to cityofmanville.com to find out more about Manville's strategic plan and the unique appeal of this welcoming community.
It feels like we should applaud that, but I, I'm gonna applaud it, because I think it's pretty awesome. So they did a really great job on that. There's also about a 60-second one as well, and so whenever they finalize these, then we'll be able to have them on our, our socia ls and on our website and everything too, and obviously any type of information that we want to get out to the public. So that's number one. The second one, I mentioned this in the workshop, but we have many more people, as, as we just talked about, we're engaging with the public. So just to let you know, as far as our budget presentations go, the first department is tonight, and we're kind of in the, a little bit past the midpoint of that, talking about public safety. Next Monday night, June 23rd, at 5:00 p.m., before the PD and Z meeting, we will have the budget presentation for the Development Services Department. July 7th, our next regular, regularly-scheduled city council meeting, we'll have Public Works Department. July 14th, Administration and Legal, that will be at 5:00 o'clock before the PD and Z meeting, and then July 21st, regular council meeting, Personnel and Finance. The next thing I wanted to tell you all about, Mayor and Council, is our core values. As you know, we adopted our core values last, last year, and we've taken a very intentional approach at, at talking about those with the staff. And so in March, we started spending the entire month basically on, on one core value at a time. In March, we talked about engagement. In April, accountability. In May, transparency. This month, we've been talking about safety. So stewardship will be in July, quality in August, and then September will be the month of service. And then finally, just a couple of announcements. BCCA is this Wednesday. Is it too late for them to sign up, or it's too late? Okay, so if you're signed up, don't forget. If you didn't, sign up for next month. And then the last one is the Fourth Fest. So it's technically an Iowa colony, but you'll see Manville's logo down there in the bottom right, so we are helping out with it. So this, this year, it's gonna be a two-day festival. The first, first evening is the Fourth of July, Friday, so that's where they'll have carnival rides, bounce houses, face painting, food trucks, fireworks. So the actual fireworks will be the Fourth of July night, imagine. And then the next night, the next day, Saturday, that's an all-day thing. That's gonna be from 10:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m. So they've got all of the same things, plus they've got live music from noon to three, actually, from noon to three, and then again from four to nine. So it seems like it's gonna be a great thing. Anything else you want to say about that, Tammy?
So for the Fourth Fest, there's a QR code. So more details are on the actual website that has a direct link to just information pertaining to this. So if anyone, there's some flyers up there. If you want all the details, just scan that QR code, and it'll take you straight to the website with all the information.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Might be a little bit too soon to make a comment about how there's gonna be a concert going until 9:00 p.m., so we'll, we'll let that one, we'll let that one slide for now. So next, we will go on to the regular agenda. First item on the regular agenda is consideration, possible action to approve Resolution 2025-R-14. Tammy, we'll turn this one over to you.
So Mayor and Council, this one is gonna be the same thing you did for the last election, only this is for the runoff election. So this will be canvassing the election, and then after the canvas, it will have Garrett that will be sworn in by the mayor, and then we'll do kind of a swap of the seats with Mr. Hudson and Garrett coming up to the dais.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. Any comments or questions from Council? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for this agenda item?
I'll make a motion.
All right. We have a motion. We have a motion from Councilman O'Plager. We have a second from Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. Next, we have regular agenda item number two. This is to issue the Certificate of Election Statement of Elected Officer and Oath of Office to the declared candidate-elect Councilmember Place Six, Garrett Rossi-Knox. So Garrett, if you could have any family and friends that you want with you up here, if you could please come forward, I'll come around and we'll do the formal swearing-in. if you could please come forward, I'll come around, and we'll do the formal swearing-in. And the laws of the United States. Do you need them to squeeze together some?
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of this city.
Of this city.
So, help me God.
So, what we will do now is we'll take a minute.
Garrett will take a photo with his family here, and then any friends or supporters that would like to come up for a big group photo, we'll have you guys come up next. Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Garrett, again, congratulations. a celebration for them and a thanks of their service, correct?
Yes, sir. That'll be the first meeting in July.
Okay.
July the 7th.
So, for those that do not know, Councilman Hudson there is 81 years old, and since the city adopted the charter, which put term limits on council members, you can serve for the most nine years. Councilman Hudson is the first person in the city's history since the charter to go the full nine years. In his past two re-elections, he was uncontested. So, we appreciate his service and all that he means to the City of Manville, and we'll be celebrating him and Councilman Perry very soon. All right. Next, we have, council will move on here, next we have the consent agenda. Do we have any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Bonner, we have a second from Mayor Protem Sarmiento. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. Council, what I'd like to do now is pivot back to the item that we were discussing in the workshop, which was the budget presentation from public safety. We have a few more divisions to run through here, so Chief, we're going to turn it back over to you, Chief Alvarado, and I believe that we're going to pick up with animal control, and then after that, we'll head into the executive session.
Good evening, for the second time. Here we go. All right, so, where we left off last, with the Animal Control Division, budget presentation for the 25, 26-year. So, key responsibilities, is this one? Yeah. Enforcing animal-related laws and ordinances, supporting public safety during animal-related emergencies, supporting public safety during animal-related emergencies. Oh, that was twice. All right, cool. He got me on that one. Managing stray and dangerous or injured animals, educating the community about responsible pet ownership. The Animal Control Department serves as a vital link between the community and animal welfare services, ensuring a safe and compassionate environment for people and animals alike. So, some accomplishments and goal from 2025 to 2026, some of the accomplishment, increased pet reunification rates, expanded public education initiatives, strengthened cruelty investigation protocols, improved response time implementing proactive, implemented proactive field patrols, supported success adoption events, modernized equipment and training. Some goals going into this next year, promoting responsible pet ownership, enhancing public safety, reducing animal overpopulation, ensuring humane treatment of animals, strengthening community partnerships, and improving outreach and public engagement. So, last year, in the numbers, calls for service were currently at 11, around 11,000, estimated to close out the year around 22,008. Follow-up calls for service were currently at 41, and again, this was ended at the month of May, so projected for the year at 82. Animal impounds at 127, estimated to be at 225. Animals returned to owner were currently at 30, and our goal for the end of the year is to be at 60. Animals released to partners currently at 96, projected to be at 160. Animal adoptions were currently at 1 and projected to be around 5 at the close of the end of the year. Our directed patrols were currently at 945 and projected to be around 1,890 by the end of the year. And then, animals euthanized were at 1 for this year, and that's hopefully at the last one. Equipment, request for the Animal Control Division, there's various things that will help our animal control officers do a little bit, to be able to do their jobs more efficiency, more efficiently. A big thing is the software Animals First with the annual yearly, around 1,000, vehicle and vehicle camper shells for both of their pickups, just to be able to keep their equipment and stuff out of weather elements. So, the animal control summary for equipment, around 4,000. And then, I have my animal control.
The one and only Officer Sherman. Thank you, Chief, for that overview. So, I'll start, we're kind of bouncing it around with different people starting. I'll start, then we'll go to Councilman Oplager next. I think, you know, building this division up from the bottom, from nothing, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. Obviously, animal control gets a lot of attention, and you guys have handled that phenomenally, built strong relationships, and are always looking for ways to improve and get better. So, we appreciate your work and your efforts there. Having a 26% or round up to 27% return rate, you know, that's incredible. That's 27 animals that some way, somehow got lost, got out, and we've been able to return them with their owners, and so, we applaud you for that. The question I would have is, you know, we have with the new police station opening, better animal facilities, and while that's not the, that's not the long-term vision, do you guys feel that this will help us continue to take a step in the right direction in providing the care and resources? Because I know now, it's tough because we get full very quickly with our current facility.
Yes, sir. From outside projection of just kind of seeing the new build and actually getting my new sticker on my helmet, so I get to go walk over there a little bit more frequently, I will let Mr. John answer that, but...
Welcome, Officer Sherman. Thank you for being here.
So, the new facility is definitely better than what we have. It's, like you said, not a long-term solution, but it's a step up from what we have, definitely. So, it's a better situation, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be better. My understanding is it'll be better for all weather conditions, which right now.
Correct.
It's tough depending.
Correct.
Heat, cold, the rain.
Absolutely. 100%.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Oplager, do you have any comments or questions?
Of course.
Okay. Councilman Lance?
Thank you, Officer Sherman. I have one comment, it's just an observation. I like the numbers. It seems like I'm drawn to numbers, but.
I am too.
One thing I would like to see on here, just in the future, just an idea, the animals returned to the owner, see, we have that on there, is 30. I'd be curious to know of the attempted returns to owners. If we had, we gave 30 back, did we have 35 or 40, and some people just didn't want them? Or it'd be interesting number to have out there.
Yes, sir. I agree, and we can actually get that. There's actually been several that we've attempted to return, but for whatever reason, it just didn't happen. But every time we go and we do a pickup, and it's a stray animal, myself and Kristen, we do make an attempt to locate an owner at that time.
Sure. I just think it's a good statistic to put out.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So, much.
Mm-hmm.
Involvement in the past with our community on the animals, and it'd be good to see that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we did try this number.
We do, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bonner?
Can you explain directed patrol? What does that mean?
So, I'll give you an example. Oilfield Road was, I know when I started, it was like the epicenter of dump, dumping dogs in the city. I talked to Mr. John Jones, he lives on Oilfield. He's the first house going down to Oilfield.
Not the UFC fighter, John Jones.
No.
Different John Jones.
No. But essentially, a directed patrol, we make it a habit to patrol basically the whole city every day, like different roads. We don't have a call necessarily on that road, but we just make a presence, and we've been focusing heavily on Oilfield. And Mr. Jones had a huge problem last year with dump dogs, as he did previous years. January through June, he had about 12 dogs, literally, that are dumped over there where he's at, and I just recently talked to him, or he stopped and talked to me, and told me, you know, thank you for what you and the PD and Kristen are doing down here. He's only had two this whole six months, first six months of the year. So, it's been, just showing our presence and doing this has been a huge reduction.
This is in addition to the 1,104 actual calls.
Correct.
Where people said, they could have told you the same information, hey, I just saw some dogs dumped, or there's dogs roaming around, or cat, any type of animal, that's different than this patrol.
Yes, directed patrols are calls we initiate basically ourselves to go. It's not necessarily a complaint from a citizen, but it's being proactive, just like Chief was saying, we're trying to be more proactive to prevent the issues, and making our presence everywhere, it's helped quite a bit.
Is there a specific way this list of these areas are generated? I mean, can the citizens call in, or do you wait and?
No.
Look at how they call in, and try and figure out patterns and stuff like that?
Yes, sir. So, we encourage, we actually encourage citizens, when we see them walking down the road, we might wave, and then, a lot of times, people are very friendly, so, you know, they wave us down, and we chat with them, and they actually ask, hey, what are you guys doing here? Is there an issue? And then, we tell them, you know, we're just doing a daily patrol, and they're very appreciative, and we let them know, if there is an issue, call us, and, you know, we can be down here even more. So, yeah, anytime a citizen has a problem, for example, on Acorn, down off Hanselman, some citizens were having issues with dogs tearing up trash. They didn't call in or anything, but when I was doing a routine patrol, gentleman stopped me and told me, and I told him, okay, one does it usually happen, what time, what days, and I'll make sure I do a patrol during that time. So, that's been helping.
I want to come in to you and your whole, while it's small, your whole department on the work that you've done since you came on. I think the cities should be proud of the job that you're doing. I know I am, and I just want to say, good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, one thing?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
You know, we're talking about putting the, adding some radar-enforced signs on some of our speed limits throughout the city, maybe some dog awareness, dog dumping signs could be something we could talk about, especially some of the hot areas, you know?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rossi-Knox, first time up here, do you have any comments or questions here? You have to unmute yourself, and then forge yours.
Okay. The animals impound, I don't know if this was asked of anyone yet, where did these animals go? Like, you pick a dog up out here, where do they go?
So, the two main places we utilize is Houston Humane and the Lake Jackson, Lake Jackson SPCA. But we also have a few smaller rescues that have actually worked with us and signed up with the city that we also utilize whenever we can, but we're constantly looking to get as many different avenues as we can.
Another thing I was curious about, have we had, this might not be a question for you, have we had anyone that's been caught doing this in the city? Like, actually been caught doing this, dumping animals? Because they're doing it. I mean, I'll go outside my house sometime, and then I'll see, oh, we got a new cat, you know? So, it happens a lot in the older areas of Manville, for sure, and I've heard about it on the campaign trail.
So, actually, we do, or we very recently had a German Shepherd that we learned was dumped, that came into our possession, and right now, they're actually working a cruelty case on that dog.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem?
Howdy, again. Oh, no, I can't see with these on. Still learning these readers. Thank you for everything.
Yes, ma'am.
We have been through a rough year with you guys.
Yes.
It has been one for the books. You guys have done everything, everything we've asked. I do have a couple of questions pertaining to the one animal that was euthanized. Can you refresh our memories on that?
The French Bulldog that was euthanized, yes. The animal that was euthanized, it was actually, I think it was a cat.
It was a cat.
We brought it to...
It was a cat. And was it done here by our department, or was it one of?
No, no, no.
Partners?
No, it was, so what we do is anytime we have an injured animal, middle of the night, we pick it up, or whenever we pick it up, we'll bring it to the pet ER off of 518 in Pearland. Yeah, so that's where we bring everything. If it's after hours, if it's during the business day, we'll take it to Manville Animal Clinic.
Okay, so the euthanization happened on recommendation?
Oh, yes. We never, we never tried to.
Hospital and something that we did.
Yes, yes.
Good thing I asked, because we know we're going to get that question.
Yes, we, yeah, we never make that decision on our own, and we've been very good about bringing any injured animal that needs treatment to either Manville Animal Clinic, or if it's after hours, to the pet ER off 518.
Wonderful. And then, for you specifically.
Yes.
You feel...
Okay. Um, the animals impeded, I don't know if this was asked by anyone yet. Um, where did these animals go? Like, you pick a dog up out here, where do they go?
So, um, the two main places we utilize is Houston Humane and, um, the, uh, Lake Jackson, Lake Jackson SPCA. Uh, but we also have a few smaller rescues that have, uh, actually worked with us and signed up, uh, with the city that we also, uh, utilize whenever we can. But we're constantly looking to get as many, uh, different avenues as we can.
Another thing I was curious about, have we had, this might not be a question for you, have we had anyone that's been caught doing this in the city? Like, actually been caught doing this, dumping animals? Because they're, they're doing it. I mean, I'll go outside my house sometime and then I'll say, oh, we got a new cat, you know? So we, it happens a lot in the older areas of Manville for sure. And I've heard about it on the campaign trail.
So actually, we, we do, um, or we very recently had a German shepherd that we learned was dumped that came into our possession. And, uh, right now, uh, they're actually working a cruelty case on that dog.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem?
Howdy. Again. Oh, no, I can't see what these on. Still learning these readers. Thank you for everything. I mean, we have been through a rough year with you guys.
Yes.
It has been one for the books. You guys have done everything, everything we've asked. Um, I do have a couple of questions pertaining to the one animal that was euthanized. Can you refresh our memories on that?
The, um, uh, French Bulldog that was euthanized, yes. Uh, it, um, the animal that was euthanized, it was actually, uh, I think it was a cat.
It was a cat.
Uh, we brought it to...
And was it done here by, by our department, or was it one of your partners?
No, no, no. No, it was, uh, so what we do is anytime we have an injured animal, uh, middle of the night, we pick it up, or whenever we pick it up, we'll bring it, uh, to the pet ER off of, uh, 518 in Pearland. Yeah. So that's where we bring everything. Um, if it's after hours, if it's, uh, during the business day, we'll take it to Manville Animal Clinic.
Okay. So the euthanization happened on recommendation?
Oh, yes. We never, we never tried to, yes, yes.
Good thing I asked because we know we're going to get that question.
Yes, we, yeah, we never make that decision on our own. And, uh, we've been very good about bringing any injured animal that needs treatment to either Manville Animal Clinic, or if it's after hours, to the, uh, pet ER off 518.
Wonderful. And then, um, for you specifically?
Yes.
You feel 100% confident that what you guys are requesting here is enough? Your budget?
I never feel like it's enough. Uh, just being honest.
Good. Be honest.
Yes. Um, so...
If there was one thing that you, if you had a say, looking at this, not to put you on the spot with the chief, but as council, we would like to know that. We want to know what are some things specifically that if, if you had the ability to come before council and say, hey, just a nudge on this, what would that be?
Uh, additional things for the new, uh, our new facility.
Okay. So that was the next question I was going to ask is, clearly we're expanding, we're growing, we're moving into the new facility. Um, based on everything here that you guys are requesting, do you feel that this is enough to sustain the growing animal control department at the new facility? You've never been one to hold back.
Like I said, Councilwoman, I never think it's enough.
Okay. All right. What is one thing then that you would prioritize on the list?
One thing that's on the list that I would?
That you would prioritize budget-wise?
I, I can't just point one single thing out.
You want them all?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, that's huge then, because we want to make sure that you guys are well-funded, because we know what happens when animal control does get out of hand. And we have a very strong animal-loving population and community here.
Yes.
And we want them to know that we are supporting not just our officers, but our animal control.
I appreciate that. Yes.
We, we need you to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I feel strongly that my council would, would agree with that. So maybe we look at that in depth and come back with some more numbers on here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilwoman?
Um, I was just curious. So is the total amount 8,000, or is it 4,000 plus the ATO training conference?
Um, I've, I think it's probably eight, uh, not looking at it.
Okay.
And we're talking about what specifically?
Page 40 and 41.
Yeah, Councilwoman, it's 8,000.
It's like a total.
What specifically is, I don't see that.
Yeah, so it looks like it's 4,000 for training and then 4,000 for, for equipment. So an $8,000 request total.
Okay. And then I was just curious, what is a small pet taxi? Is that the thing that you, a carrier, or?
It's essentially a, a small pet carrier. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's it. I mean, 8,000 is pretty reasonable.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think Officer Sherman, to Mayor Protem's point, as we take a look at the facility that you guys are going to have, I see here as a lot of uh, equipment that you guys are going to be able to use out of your vehicles. I want to make sure that we think about the equipment that you guys are going to need actually in that facility. Uh, I think there's also a fantastic opportunity for us to reach out to the community. If they have donations, I know the community is very willing to donate items as long as they meet the, the specs of what you guys need there, um, which is very specific, of course. But let's not be afraid to, to put together what that list might, might be and make that ask, because a lot of people in the community support you guys and want to step up and help you in any way that they can.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Officer Sherman. Council, any other comments or questions here? Hearing none. Chief, we'll go back to you. Thank you, sir. Next, we have the emergency management portion. And a brand-new division that was just, just formed.
Yes, sir. So at first glance, when I saw emergency management, I just went back to my 100, 200, 300, 400, 700, 800 classes.
Started twitching, twitching a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, just, just, just quite a bit. Uh, but then looking at the, her overall, uh, what she's already contributed to the team within the matter of weeks is just mind-boggling. Uh, so even going over her, her stuff for this, uh, projected budget, um, it's outside-the-box thinking, like, oh, my gosh, if we had this last year type of mindset, uh, is, is, I just wanted to tip my hat to her, because like, her, her recent, uh, addition to our team is just outstanding. So, uh, some key responsibilities, coordinator, coordinating disaster preparedness, training, and community outreach, uh, managing response efforts during emergencies such as severe weather, fires, and hazardous material incidents. Also included in the new legislative update, any mass casualty event that goes on within our community that would encompass for our emergency management coordinator. Uh, leading post-disaster recovery and damage assessment, uh, working with local, regional, and federal partners to secure resources and support. Uh, some accomplishments in 2025, uh, we managed the city through Hurricane Barrel in 2024, uh, mitigated several cubic yards of debris, uh, enhanced community preparedness, maintain and improve emergency operation plans, the EOP, uh, strengthen inter-agency coordination, conducted regular training and, training and exercises, uh, strengthen inter-agency coordination, uh, improved disaster, so some goals are to improve our disaster response capabilities, developing a resilient recovery framework, promote hazardous mitigation planning, and expand emergency notification systems, which, if you haven't noticed in the past couple of weeks, we've been getting those as city staff, which is awesome. Um, equipment requests, emergency management, uh, the emergency management group, which is an emergency management software, uh, the ArcGIS system, uh, Storm Geo, uh, barren weather slash, uh, phone apps, uh, the Starlink, which would be a backup internet. When I saw that, I was like, why didn't I think of that? That's freaking amazing. Uh, sorry. Uh, mobile ELC containers, uh, water storage and ELC equipment. Uh, a little bit more specific on the ELC equipment would be about, uh, 10 radios, not, not very dissimilar to what we currently have on, on, on patrol officers. Uh, but that would give us the ability to communicate from our ELC out to individuals out in the field. Uh, so there's a little bit more point of contact whenever we have the whole emergency operation system operational. Um, some future projects, this is a page that just completely blew me away as far as, uh, the outside-the-box thinking also. Uh, so, I mean, potentially in the future projects, uh, with potential grants, uh, the public siren system, live camera feeds, fix and mobile, uh, digital road signage, which would enhance what we currently have with our traffic radar system, I mean, our traffic trailers, uh, generator standby contract, additional generators, emergency water access points, uh, fireback slash fuel mitigation zones, uh, critical covert improvement with ditch expansions, uh, community center slash shelter. Uh, I was kind of, we need a grant for that one. Um, the summary, emergency management, uh, equipment and software is around, um, 30,000. And this is just a closeout summary on the last slide. Um, so if you have any questions with, for Ms. Jamie?
All right. Thank you, Chief. We'll start with Councilwoman Robie Robinson first. Councilwoman?
I know. So the, oh. So the generators that are listed here for the million, how many buildings is that in total?
So for the generators, city, most of your city facilities already have a generator attached. It's for future expansion and growth, especially with lift stations and water plants, to make sure everything that when we grow in the future has a generator attached to it. So we're not behind the curve, we're both, ahead of the curve with generator power. These items are the grant future projects items.
Okay. And then the siren alert system for 500,000?
Siren alert system is, um, in my previous employment, I assisted with putting in a siren warning system. Uh, and that is something I would like to see here. And you can do weather notifications along with hazardous, hazardous notifications. You do have, um, pipeline running through the system. You do have a rail. And so those things like, uh, the care system can be utilized here also. So that would be installing, uh, approximately three siren systems.
Okay. Because I was going to ask, so what's like the radius on the siren where you can?
We would have to do a sound study because it depends on, um, buildings, traffic noise. Um, but the layout, just what I can be an educated assumption would be three would cover, um, where we stand as of today.
And is that what the 500,000 is priced at?
Yes, ma'am.
So it could be more?
It could be more with additional sirens, but the, uh, with three sirens with the software, 500,000, uh, would cover it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Protem?
So glad to have you.
Good evening.
We've had this conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
So thrilled. I do have questions, quite a few. Let's do it. Bear with me. Okay. So this is a massive budget. And it seems like personnel, wait, is that just your personnel? I saw something. Okay, that's total. All right. Sorry. Okay, going back up, just to make sure.
Jamie got worried for a second. She goes, wait, I don't think I'm asking for person.
We're, we're operating off a screen here that goes a little and goes big. So bear with me. Um, okay. So any of this, um, requested budget, how much of it do we already have? And how much of it is, is actually new that we don't currently have in place?
Okay. So the screen that is up on the TVs now, you have none of this.
So this is all new?
This is all new. This is my dream list. This is where I want to get us, right? That's why.
So this is what city on the rise?
100%. And a lot of this is grant, but you know, I, I just want you guys to be aware that grant funding takes years.
Of course.
But this is where I want to get us long-term. I mean, I put a community shelter system up here. That's $3 million. I've specked that out, you know, but there's safety grants for that. But put it on your radar because we have to do the matches for that. Um, and oftentimes that's 25%. So if we're talking about it now, it's in that forefront, those seeds are planted. It's something we can plan for.
Okay, understood. The other question that I have is, for instance, the, as, um, Councilwoman Robie Robinson, it's a lot to say. Sorry, I'm getting used to it. Um, public siren alert system, is this an audible alert system? And where would it go? And how does it actually operate? Because in my experience with government emergency notification systems, they're usually digital and they hit all your devices all at the same time, simultaneously. How does this differ from that?
So it would be a dual-purpose system. It would be an audible, uh, if you're outside, you're working outside, anything, you would hear the audible, uh, depending on your location and the location of the siren, whether you would hear it extensively into a residence. But at that same time, it would pair with our notification system. So if the sirens go off, you would automatically get a notification on your phone.
Okay.
So that would be a dual action. So you're going to hear it audibly, but if you do not hear it audibly, you would hear it on your phone.
Now, that notification system that hits our cell phones, is that the one that breaks through and gives you that emergency alert? Or is it one you have to subscribe to that does the text messaging or phone call, et cetera?
It would be a breakthrough.
It would be a breakthrough.
Like I, so your breakthroughs now that you have is called IPaaS, which is a federal government. Um, we have to go through that. So that's your breakthrough. This would also fall under that life safety breakthrough.
Perfect. Thank you. The next one that I have is when it comes to digital road signage, $30,000. Can we be just a little more specific on what that would cover and why it's so important?
So digital road signage is the mobile, uh, digital road signage that we currently have in place. But, uh, the ability to have a few that are implemented in place, because preparedness, messaging, and also if there's something going on, say that we have a trade derailment and this area is closed down, you say, your cell phone's dead, whatever the case may be, you're still going to get messaging, uh, through the sign. But it's dual-purpose. Uh, the PD can use it, developmental surfaces, uh, road closures. So it's something that can be multifaceted and just general, hey, the Fourth of July Fest is coming up, um, to be utilized for that.
And currently, we do not have any road sign, digital road signs. Two. We have two and we're requesting two more?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, the generator standby contract, what is that?
So every, it's, it's hurricane season, generators are a high commodity. To get first dibs on most generators that we might need, um, especially the very larger generators, you have to enter into a contract to be put on the first list. And usually there's a fee associated with that. So what that does is allow us to go into a contract to say, hey, if we need a generator, we call you. They are going to have a generator for us. It's going to be reserved. It's ours, no matter what.
It's like a fancy membership.
Yes, that is exactly what it is.
Pay-to-play, huh? Okay. Got to figure that one out. All right. And then, um, 200,000 for emergency water access points, please.
Uh, Mr. Hall will know more about this. So in the event that we have a failure of the water system, there's these access points that we can pull safe water that we have already in the lines, already in the tower, whatever the case may be. And they become access points for the public. So they can come and fill up, you know, the water, five-gallon, whatever that case may be. So that way, um, we know that water is secure, that water is safe, um, that they're not using in their residence, but they can come to and fill it up.
Okay. So on that note, so what you're saying is that this would be specific to our residents, should a catastrophe happen where our water is not drinkable, and it would make it accessible specifically to us?
Yes.
Okay. Where does the $200,000 come in for that? Explain how and why we would need that money.
So I'm going to be honest, because I come in, you know, five weeks, I hadn't got to really drill down. So it's a very broad estimate, because I don't, I haven't had the chance. We've been talking about a lot of other things. But seeing the size of pipe, our storage system, the drainage, um, the gravitational pull is what I mean, for it to determine what we actually need to make that accessible. So this is a general broad amount for that, because I wasn't able to drill down to give you a firm amount.
But in your experience, what would the money be allocated for? Would it be on reserve for that moment that we need to implement that? Or would it be to develop the project in order to have access to it?
It's to develop the project, whether we need, um, to install the external piping and the flow system where we would go and fill up their containers, however that would work. If we needed additional piping at that center, um, that it would be for the actual project, construction of the project.
Now, if we were to, to allocate funds to that this year and get that ready to go, does it need maintenance? Because what if we don't need that in five, 10, seven, eight, you know, five, 10 years goes by, will we need to allocate funds in the future towards that? And would it be the same amount, or would it be significantly less?
It would be significant less. And it's, I'm not great with the maintenance of it, but it's just, uh, standard line maintenance, flushing, flowing, making sure, um, everything is not, um, degraded.
Okay. I would, I was expecting that answer. So, okay. And then, um, when we're looking at the fire breaks and the fuel mitigation zones, what are we looking to allocate $100,000 for?
So there is, um, a company that can come in. And what they do is they completely redo and get all your ditches redug, uh, they clear debris, um, out of our larger drainage ditches that might have some debris. Um, Mr. Hall and his crew do an amazing job, but there's only so much you can go around. And so this would allow us to come in, actually get everything up to speed, caught up, um, improve some areas that need, uh, deeper ditches, or need some fire breaks put in for the, um, the debris that's around.
So this would be for fire breaks and fuel mitigation zones is what it says here? So, so what I'm understanding is we would outsource that to someone else in order to handle this. So this would just be money on reserves, because we wouldn't really need to do anything. It would just be allocated there in the event of?
It would be allocated, if you choose this project, then we will go to bid, find the contractor, and have them, um, start mitigating the debris, the ditches, um, to install it.
Awesome. And then, critical covert improvement and ditch expansion, 500,000. So that would be for the equipment purchases in order to?
Yes.
Make that happen?
Yes. And to maintain it. Um, looking at the new studies that actually is just coming through, I've been working, uh, there's a group of emergency managers that's been working with Texas A&amp;M to do flood mitigation studies. And as the scenery around us changes, we know that that water has to go somewhere. And so looking at the new studies, it needs more engineering, um, to understand. But this would allow us to really plan for that future as we grow, north of us grows, um, for the mitigation of some of those things.
Wonderful. So what I love about this, well, before I say that, the last thing here, the 3 million.
Yes.
Wow.
This is my dream.
This is your dream?
This is my dream.
Baby steps.
Yes.
Love you, but baby steps. Okay. Community center and shelter. So share with me your thoughts about this dream.
So this building would be a safe building. And, um, what it dual purposes as, as a everyday community center. Uh, people can rent it. Uh, a lot of places use it for senior citizens. They come, do their afternoon bingo, whatever the case may be. But it's that community involvement center. It also doubles as a storm shelter that people can go if we need storm. It also doubles as a storm shelter that people can go if we need storm, cooling center, warming center. But the big picture is that it would actually be a working shelter if needed. So it would house approximately 100 people of per standard sheltering system and with showers, beds, the whole thing. But also, it would contain emergency management storage that, because it's expensive. It's expensive because it is a hardened building to a level of, you just say, 150 mile per hour winds. So it would withstand, so we could put equipment in there. The other thing is we could house other first responders. So we have Texas Task Force One comes down. We have the ability to house those first responders where it's somewhere safe. We could also put our equipment in there, but have the long-term storage where we could secure water, stretch our cots, those kind of things for ourselves to make sure that we are prepared. Because at the end of the day, disasters begin and end locally. And it is my responsibility to make sure that we can take care of our residents. And at this time, I do not like to depend upon anybody else, the state, the county. It's my job to make sure they are going to be taken care of. And this is how I'll do that.
Okay. Wonderfully said. So with that being said, the reason I love most of this is because on the video that we saw and we heard mayor say it, and we've all said it, we want Manville to be known for being safe. And that obviously encompasses having a strong police force and a police presence and low crime. But it also means that we are prepared for these things that can happen. Now, when I'm looking at this and I hear you, it all sounds like, wow, we all, we need this, all of it right away. But we also know that taxes and our funds, and we've got to be able to be responsible and good stewards of this. So what are your top three priorities if you had to pick?
My top three is if you would go back to the other page.
Okay. Up one, okay?
Would be that list.
This list?
Yes.
The response group, the ARGIS, the Storm Geo, the Starlink, the mobile EOS containers, water storage and EOC equipment?
Yes. That's $30,000.
So you would be happy with this?
Yes. Because that gives me time to be a good steward, to get actual numbers, to actually see where our risks, do a Thira assessment, to understand what should be first, what should be second, understand our, the big picture. I put together this list to show like, this is what I've quickly seen in the five weeks I've been here of what we need just off the top. But this list is also something that I can work on with grants. Let me look at things, let's see. Because something I might think is, as a big pitcher, being a priority, really, when I drill down to it, it's not. So my, my ask, my recommendation is everything on the first page. If anything you want to pick on here would maybe be the generator contract, just so we can secure a generator and have. I know we do have two portable generators, but looking at the size, to have a significant size generator, that would be nice to have a contract for that. Other than that, I would just ask to give me that first list. Let me settle in. Let's do assessment. Let's do the city right. Figure out what we need, what's a priority, where we're going, make the strategic plan for emergency management and move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman, Ross Knox.
Can we go back to the slide? This one, yeah. Okay, it says, it says potential grant projects. Do we know how many of these we can get a grant for? Is this for all of them?
I mean, I would love to say all of them. But due to the current political climate that we're in, FEMA funding and mitigation is really up in the air. While if it was not the way it is, I would say there's mitigation grants every year. My goal is to submit every single one and they'll say no. Or they'll say yes. One thing that happens, you submit everything and sometimes GLO might have a different, little bit extra money, and they'll say TDM, you got a project, and they'll move it. So that's how my siren was funded from that way. So those are options. And that's my game plan, but I'm kind of just seeing where we're going to end up.
Okay. The live camera feeds. Tell us about that. I don't know if that was asked yet, didn't hear that.
So I'm glad you brought that up. That is something that would be extremely beneficial, because then when we're in the EOC, in that moment, we can actually see what is going out without endangering any officers, any firefighters, any public works. We can see streets are flooding. What's the, we have the bromer, we have the wind, but to actually see, do we have a lot of debris flying? We can see that in live time in the EOC is really important for situational awareness.
And about the sirens? I was curious if any of the local cities have this?
I just, my previous employer, which is the City of Angleton, that's where I installed three.
Okay. And I heard Councilman Carmen Robb Robinson, she mentioned the range. Would that cover the full 40 square miles?
From what I've looked at, from my knowledge from before, it looks like three will cover the area that we expand.
Yeah. My concern is if we're going to spend money on something, it needs to be able to encompass everyone that lives here, you know, not just our dense areas.
Oh, no. It would, it would, it would cover your, your current city jurisdiction and part of the ETJ. But without a complete city, I can't tell you how much it'll go into the ETJ, but some of it would reach into the ETJ.
Thank you. That's all that.
Councilman Bonner?
Yeah. Expanding a little bit on Gears Hill, don't you have to be careful about imposing on other cities with the sound system too? So that's why sometimes the ETJ doesn't get covered as well. I want to applaud you on the forward-thinking part of this, this future growth. My background's to always think about the future and, and that, that's an amazing list. I think we're going to be very, very happy as we move forward with that. I have a question about backup internet.
Yes, sir.
Do we not have that currently? Or are you going to be on some system that's different from?
We do. We have redundancy. That was one thing I made sure. We have redundancy. We have two different services. I believe it's Xfinity, AT&amp;T. We have multiple services.
I was afraid you were going to say where they were.
No. Oh, my gosh, no. Don't do that. That'd be horrible. So there is multiple services. And then we do have Wi-Fi that sell your data. But as we've experienced in Beryl in the recent ice storms, cellular data has not been something that I feel comfortable relying on. So moving to a Starlink system, it's satellite-based. While we won't have it during the weather and cloud coverage event, as soon as it clears, we would have the ability to have internet. We did talk, I did talk with IT about a COW system, which is a mobile cell phone tower. But still, again, cell phone is not, has let us down recently with disasters.
Okay, I agree. The camera system you were talking about, could that be something like a camera on top of the water tower that we're putting up that would, that can pan in and pan out to look at? You know, if you already have a place to put it, that seems like that cuts down on some of the cost.
Hundred percent.
And then you made a statement a minute ago, maybe I just heard it wrong, but in your opinion, is the future EOC at the PD not adequate?
Oh, it's very adequate. The, the shelter that I'm talking about different is for the public. The EOC that we have is purely.
I got that, but I thought you made some statement about something wasn't big enough over there or needed something better. Maybe I just heard it wrong. So you feel that in your experience of emergency management, that that's going to be state-of-the-art over there? Because from the times that we've gone through it, it looks like Star Wars over there.
It's amazing. It's one of the reasons Chief sold me to come here.
All right. Well, look forward to working to get you everything that you need.
I appreciate, thank you.
And you wish for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lance?
That's a, the great list. And I think your requests for this year are nominal. I think it's, you know, very understood. And like all of us, we're really have our eyes focused on this future projects. You know, that's a lot of, a lot of projects. And that's, every one of these are really neat ideas. And me, I'm, I'm from Deer Park. And we have a public, or they have a public service system over there, quite a few of them. I would be curious if we don't really, would need more than three to cover the whole city. Because even over there, and I live not too far off of 225, close to the refineries when I lived there. And even some of the systems, you really can't understand what they're saying. You know, it's like, okay, something's going off. I'll just stay inside and turn my AC off. I mean, but it's a great thing to have, even though we're not flooded with refineries like Deer Park was. But I do, I honestly believe that is a great thing to have. The live camera feed, that's wonderful. The digital road signage, that's something that I've talked to the mayor about in the past that I think we need more of those, not just for the, the public service events, but just, you know, like getting the word out. Because a lot of times, we have a hard time reaching our, our citizens on things that we know are important. And we've said, if we had a sign on the road, and that people going up and down Highway 6, it's like, hey, there's something going on. We need to check in on that. So that's, I think we need more of those. Some people think they're an eyesore or whatever. I think they're a benefit. So it's, the one thing I do, and maybe it's because you're looking at this as a grant project, but I'm surprised to see the covert improvement expansion under emergency management instead of just public works. Is there a reason that's under your group here?
So that's one thing that's amazing about my department is because a lot of things fall under mitigation. So because it's mitigating, I'm mitigating flood potential, which will, that falls under mine. So flooding is mine, but also mitigation falls under emergency management. So that's where I partner with, you'll see me working with a lot of departments to work out. I especially when asked, what do you need? What can I have? I talked to IT about cybersecurity. I talked to public works, what do you need? What, what, where can, what can I do to help? In the grant world, that would cover under mitigation. But project that also helps me in the long term of making my life easier when an event does happen.
Okay. And then lastly, the community service center, or center shelter. We just by chance have 160 acres that needs development. So maybe a good place for that.
I already eyed it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Lance. Councilman Oplinger?
So the cameras, TransStar is not a viable option to, to partner with them to get a camera feed?
TransStar has three cameras currently, and they're mostly, I believe all three of them are on Highway 6, I believe. So it doesn't cover some of our vulnerable areas that we really would need to focus on to see the areas that we are vulnerable for hazards.
Okay. All right. Well, it's, it's, it's a.
But yes, I do have access to their cameras.
Yeah, no, it's just a thought, you know, I've been over there, there, because that's what they do is emergency management, right? That they're all, other than watching traffic, but their emergency management center, right?
It's amazing, too.
Yeah, that's kind of what they're, so you're going to partner with them a little bit?
I know them very well.
Yeah. All right. Very good. So it's a very nice list.
Thank you, sir.
For, for starting off, very good needs assessment. I'd like to, you know, prioritize it. I don't know, you know, there's a lot to do. There's a lot to do, you know, it's just, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
But Jamie, no, no questions, just comments. I think your, your budget request for this year is spot on. As I look through the list of opportunities for the future, those future projects, a lot of these things are items that the community has brought up to me. You know, Mr. Simmons has brought up the shelter. I've had people that have, after the tornadoes in Alvin, brought up the sirens. So glad, I'm glad to see the proactive thinking there. And anything that we can do to help out the other departments as it relates to mitigation, emergency preparedness, that we can secure grants for that, that's huge. Even with the local match, it's ways that we can bring those dollars back, back home. So I think you're spot on. Love your social media posts. Thank you for being active. Councilman Lance just fixed his Facebook page, so he can share your posts now too.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Congratulations, Councilman on that. Took him six months. He's an IT expert, working for Geek Squad now. So Jamie, appreciate this. Great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Well, counsel, I believe that brings us to the end. Dan, are there any specific questions that you are needing counsel to answer tonight as it relates to this? I know the way that we do this, we have each department head present. Then we have a final meeting that, you know, it's kind of final comments, final key things. Is there anything that you're looking, looking for from counsel tonight?
I think we got it, mayor. We wanted to have, you know, input from, from all counsel, and we did. You know, on each, on each division, each division is important for different reasons. So that's, that's why this whole process is so valuable. Rosie's obviously taking notes. I'm taking notes on that final summary sheet. Blake, if you could go back to that, I just wanted to bring something to your attention, mayor and counsel. So I believe the total, the total asks, if you add them all up, is right at $3 million if we include benefits as well. So that just kind of is a number to be walking around with. That included everything that was presented tonight. So we'll go back through and, you know, see how that compares to all the other departments once we get there. But no, mayor, we got what we needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan. All right, counsel, with that, I will read out the executive session. We obviously have a lot of people here tonight that are for the public hearing. So my ask will just be that we make a very efficient use of our time in executive session to respect their time too. Mr. Hightower is here. He'll be joining us in executive session for at least the first item. Dan, anyone else that you wish to invite back, please do so. Counsel will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the following, Missouri County MUD 61 and Lakeland Manville Development LP Development and Utility Agreement, as well as the legal issues regarding the construction of the Manville Public Works Facility. To the public, we're going to step back into executive session to discuss these two matters as they pertaining to legal matters, which we can discuss in executive session. We'll be back out here in a little bit and continue on with the agenda. We will head into executive session at 7:23 PM. Thank you.
Council will reconvene from executive session. At eight nineteen PM, having taken no action in executive session. We now have regular agenda item number three, consideration and possible action to direct the city manager on Brazoria County MUD sixty-one and Lakeland-Manville Development LP Development and Utility Agreement. Council, I would like to make a motion to authorize our city manager to contract with Olson and Olson to take the appropriate legal action with an amount not to exceed what was discussed within executive session. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Bonner, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Dan, Bobby, go get them. Go get them. Agenda item number four, consideration and possible action to direct the city manager on the construction of the Manville Public Works facility. Council, we are going to take no action on that item tonight. Are you guys good with that?
Yes.
All right, we will now go to staff presentation on public hearing items. Ms. Ellie, thank you for waiting patiently for us tonight. If you can give us a high level overview and then we'll step into the public hearing.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm sure that all of you knows information of this requested specific use permit for hotel with the NICS code seven two one 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 zero hotel and motels except casino hotels. On the property located on west side of Cemetery Road, north of Large Avenue, the site is two point five acres of six point three acre tract, which is part of the part of a large larger ten acre property that is split by Large Avenue. The applicant is proposing a four story hotel with eighty-five rooms and that would include a bar, meeting room, restaurant, fitness center. Property is currently zoned light commercial with Highway six overlay district. Access will be from Large Avenue, which is currently undeveloped. As part of this project, the applicant will be responsible for improving Large Avenue, including sidewalk and landscaping. The detention pond is also proposed on the west side of the site, which will support entire ten point six acre tract. A trip generation analysis provided which estimates thirty-nine morning and fifty evening peak hour trips. Per zoning chapter, staff reviewed it and staff reviewed the SUP criteria and hotels must meet several predominant conditions that included in the report. Also additional conditions, staff evaluated the proposal against the SUP criteria and the project aligns with the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan and its goal to promote commercial development along Highway six. The light commercial with Highway six overlay zoning district designation supports hotel use and is compatible with nearby commercial and mixed use area. Building height for four stories is four stories and about the window placement, this could impact privacy for the adjacent property residential properties. That said, the light commercial zoning allowed buildings up to sixty feet tall by right. So this impact could occur regardless of this SUP. Staff recommends buffering and screening to minimize visual noise and lighting impact. This includes a ten feet wide landscape buffer with evergreen trees every twenty-four twenty-five feet, a six feet masonry fence along the residential property line, all lightings to be fully shielded and under twenty-five feet in height with a photometric survey required. Regarding traffic, guest and staff traffic is expected to be moderate and manageable. Also, staff recommends requiring the extension of Large Avenue to the west across the drainage ditch to improve area connectivity. The development will be required to connect it to the city's water and sewer and staff recommendation was approval is approval to request to the requested SUP with the conditions indicated in the report. And the planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five and there were public inputs, the concern raised by the concerns raised by public inputs are about noise, traffic, crime, and safety. And planning and development zoning also discussed their concerns and asked clarification questions to staff and applicant. A motion to recommend approval of the request SUP to the city council failed with a vote of zero to seven. And I believe that applicant also has a presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ellie, I appreciate that. Dan, Bobby, I want to ask you guys a question. Do you think it would be appropriate to have the applicant come and do their presentation now before the public hearing or wait until the agenda item? I know we usually have them wait, but I figured I would ask from a procedural standpoint.
Well, sticking to our custom, Mayor, it's always when it comes to the agenda item unless we go out to put something specifically on there to allow the developer to put a presentation separate and apart from that.
Perfect, thank you, Bobby, I appreciate that clarification. So the way that it will work tonight for the public is I will read off the subject of the public hearing. We have individuals that have submitted letters in opposition and support. I will just make a reference of the name and the address of those in opposition and those in support. We then have citizens and individuals that have signed up to speak on this subject. So I will call out your name, have you come forward, you can then speak. Then I will do the first call for anybody that is wishing to speak on the subject of the public hearing. There's probably going to be a few of y'all, so please raise your hand, we'll make sure everybody gets a turn, I'll call in, you have you come forward. We need your comments to stick on the subject of the public hearing. If they veer off to different subjects, I'll try to rein you back in. And if we happen not to have that happen, then I will ask you to sit back down. When you come forward to speak, please state your name and address, that includes the city and state that you reside in for the record so we know who all is speaking to us. As I understand it, there's people that are residents of Manville and people that are not residents of Manville that wish to speak on this item. We will then move to the regular agenda item where the applicant will give us a presentation and council will then have an opportunity to make statements and ask questions. So the public hearing is to hear input from the public regarding an ordinance of the city of Manville, Texas amending the zoning classification approximately two point five zero nine acre portion of a six point three acre tract of land, PID two two eight two four seven lot two and lot three of a minor platte of Callahan subdivision number two, generally setback approximately two hundred seventy ninety-seven feet from the west side of Cemetery Road and abutting unimproved Large Avenue right of way on the north side from light commercial district, state highway six overlay district to light commercial district, state highway six overlay district with specific use permit for the granting of a specific use permit with conditions to authorize the use of the property for NAICS use seven two one accommodations, providing for the amendment of the city's official zoning map, providing for severability and providing a penalty in amount not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day of violation of any provision hereof. We will open this
Council will reconvene from executive session. At eight nineteen P M, having taken no action in executive session, we now have regular agenda item number three, consideration and possible action to direct the city manager on Brazoria County MUD sixty-one and Lakeland-Manville Development L P Development and Utility Agreement. Council, I would like to make a motion to authorize our city manager to contract with Olson and Olson to take the appropriate legal action with an amount not to exceed what was discussed within executive session. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Bonner, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Dan, Bobby, go get them. Go get them. Agenda item number four, consideration and possible action to direct the city manager on the construction of the Manville Public Works Facility. Council, we are going to take no action on that item tonight. Are you guys good with that?
Yes.
All right, we will now go to staff presentation on public hearing items. Ms. Ellie, thank you for waiting patiently for us tonight. If you can give us a high level overview and then we'll step into the public hearing.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm sure that all of you knows information of this requested specific use permit for hotel with the NICS code seven two one 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 zero hotel and motels except casino hotels on the property located on west side of Cemetery Road, north of Large Avenue. The site is two point five acres of six point three acre track, which is part of the, part of a large, larger ten acre property that is split by Large Avenue. The applicant is proposing a four story hotel with eighty-five rooms and that would include a bar, meeting room, restaurant, fitness center. Property is currently zoned light commercial with Highway six overlay district. Access will be from Large Avenue, which is currently undeveloped. As part of this project, the applicant will be responsible for improving Large Avenue, including sidewalk and landscaping. The detention pond is also proposed on the west side of the site, which will support an entire ten point six acre tract. A trip generation analysis provided, which estimates thirty-nine morning and fifty evening peak hour trips. Per zoning chapter, staff reviewed it and staff reviewed the S U P criteria and hotels must meet several predominant conditions that included in the report. Also additional conditions, staff evaluated the proposal against the S U P criteria and the project aligns with the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan and its goal to promote commercial development along Highway six. The light commercial with Highway six overlay zoning district designation supports hotel use and is compatible with nearby commercial and mixed use area. Building height for four stories, as for stories and about the window placement, this could impact privacy for the adjacent property, residential properties. That said, the light commercial zoning allowed buildings up to sixty feet tall by right. So this impact could occur regardless of this S U P. Staff recommends buffering and screening to minimize visual noise and lighting impact. This includes a ten feet wide landscape buffer with evergreen trees every twenty-four, twenty-five feet, a six feet masonry fence along the residential property line. All lightings to be fully shielded and under twenty-five feet in height with a photometric survey required. Regarding traffic, guest and staff traffic is expected to be moderate and manageable. Also, staff recommends requiring the extension of Large Avenue to the west across the drainage ditch to improve area connectivity. The development will be required to connect it to the city's water and sewer and staff recommendation was approval, is approval to request, to the requested S U P with the conditions indicated in the report. And the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five and there were public inputs, the concern raised by, the concerns raised by public inputs are about noise, traffic, crime, and safety. And planning and development zoning also discussed their concerns and asked clarification questions to staff and applicant. A motion to recommend approval of the request S U P to the city council failed with a vote of zero to seven. And I believe that applicant also has a presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ellie, I appreciate that. Dan, Bobby, I want to ask you guys a question. Do you think it would be appropriate to have the applicant come and do their presentation now before the public hearing or wait until the agenda item? I know we usually have them wait, but I figured I would ask from a procedural standpoint.
Well, sticking to our custom, Mayor, it's always when it comes to the agenda item, unless we go out to put something specifically on there to allow the developer to put a presentation separate and apart from that.
Perfect, thank you. Bobby, I appreciate that clarification. So the way that it will work tonight for the public is I will read off the subject of the public hearing. We have individuals that have submitted letters in opposition and support. I will just make a reference of the name and the address of those in opposition and those in support. We then have citizens and individuals that have signed up to speak on this subject. So I will call out your name. Have you come forward, you can then speak. Then I will do the first call for anybody that is wishing to speak on the subject of the public hearing. There's probably going to be a few of y'all, so please raise your hand. We'll make sure everybody gets a turn. I'll call in you, have you come forward. We need your comments to stick on the subject of the public hearing. If they veer off to different subjects, I'll try to rein you back in. And if we happen not to have that happen, then I will ask you to sit back down. When you come forward to speak, please state your name and address, that includes the city and state that you reside in for the record, so we know who all is speaking to us. As I understand it, there's people that are residents of Manville and people that are not residents of Manville that wish to speak on this item. We will then move to the regular agenda item where the applicant will give us a presentation and council will then have an opportunity to make statements and ask questions. So the public hearing is to hear input from the public regarding an ordinance of the City of Manville, Texas amending the zoning classification approximately two point five zero nine acre portion of a six point three acre tract of land, PID two two eight two four seven lot two and lot three of a minor platte of Callahan subdivision number two, generally set back approximately two hundred seventy, ninety-seven feet from the west side of Cemetery Road and abutting unimproved Large Avenue right of way on the north side from light commercial district, State Highway six overlay district to light commercial district, State Highway six overlay district with specific use permit for the granting of a specific use permit with conditions to authorize the use of the property for NAICS use seven two one accommodations, providing for the amendment of the city's official zoning map, providing for severability and providing a penalty in amount not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day of violation of any provision hereof. We will open this public hearing at eight twenty-seven P M. We have a letter of opposition that was submitted by Dwayne Blade Lock, who lives here in Manville off of Georgia Streets, and also a letter of opposition from Carrie Blade Lock, same address in opposition. We then have letters of support from Koshik Desai, who lives in, off of three three one eight Pecan Mill Drive in Sugar Land, Texas. We then have another letter of support from Amar Patel, does not state an address. We have a letter of support from Bhavesh Ghar off of four eight five six Polymer Lane, League City, Texas. We have a letter of support from Cheaton Patel, no address stated. We have a letter of support from Hardiv Malotra, who lives at two two six West Fairmont Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania. We have a letter of support from Hardick Patel, who lives at one zero three one five Sugar Hollow Street, Sugar Land, Texas. We have a letter of support from Hitesh Patel, two seven one two Sunshade Court, Pearland, Texas. We have a letter of support from Jay Patel, no address was stated. A letter of support from no name here, but from one zero two Breckenridge Drive, Hattiesburg, Mississippi. We have a letter of support from Manish Patel and at one zero seven one one Baton Rock Court, Richmond, Texas. A letter of support from Palak Patel at nine five zero zero Bissell Road, Manville, Texas. We have a letter of support from Paloma De Valos, no address stated, but they do state that they are a proud resident of Manville, Texas. A letter of support from Pakjet, Punkjay Patel, one seven one four Bright Lake Way, Missouri City, Texas. A letter of support from Perez Patel, one seven five five zero Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas. We have a letter of support from Samarth Patel at one nine two two zero Space Center Boulevard, Houston, Texas. A letter of support from Vimal Padrik at two six three one five Morgan Creek Lane, Katy, Texas. And a letter of support from Adrian Centino, no address stated, but they do state that they are a Manville resident. So we appreciate everybody that took the time to submit these letters of support and opposition. Staff, thank you for putting these together and highlighting the names for me. That was very helpful to find that information. Appreciate you guys. Now we will go to those that are wishing to, that signed up with the speaker participation registration form, so I'll call out your name. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. The first person we have here is Brenda Johnwell. Ms. Brenda. Hey, Ms. Brenda, I know you.
Me too.
How are you doing? It's been years since I've seen you. You doing good?
Good to see you.
You as well. If you can state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours.
My name is Brenda Johnwell. My address is thirty-seven oh six Manville. I live in Manville. My address is thirty-seven oh six Skyline Drive in Manville, Texas. Got that straight for the record, right? I was in support when I came in, the Marriott. I like the Marriott. I like a Marriott coming into the town of Manville if we're going to be a city on the rise. Because when I have guests coming in town, because Manville is my hotel, I mean, the Marriott is my hotel of choice, and I say that because I was, my wedding reception was at the Marriott Medical Center, and I've always used the Marriott. So I'm a big supporter of the Marriott. Sidebar, because the Marriott, I was told when my kid was little as a Cub Scout, they supported the Boy Scout of America. So I've always supported them. So I like the Marriott. Now, I don't live, I live over in Civil Creek, which I think I'm in ETJ, right? But I still can speak as Manville resident, right? I don't know. I know sometimes I can't vote because I'm in ETJ, ETJ. But I like the Marriott. That's all I'm saying. I like the Marriott and I just feel we're going to be a city on the rise and we have to look like a city on the rise. You know, I'm not sure what hotels we have here. I think we have the Best Western, I think we have a Best Western, and it would nice to have a Marriott, too. Now, I was talking to someone because I didn't know exactly where it was going to be located and their concern was that it's going to be close to a neighborhood. Then I talked to the gentleman who, I don't know who I'm talking to, but he said that he was part of that. So I said, well, I just talked to someone, they were concerned about the location of where you're going to put the hotel. They didn't want it coming into their neighborhood. I said, that's well respected, you know? But then I talked to the gentleman, he says it's not going to be close to the neighborhood, it's closer to Highway six. So I don't know. But, well, I don't know. I mean, I guess you have to Google and see where the map's at, you know what I'm saying? But anyway, I'd like to see a hotel of that substantial national recognition. That's why I'm saying yes.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda, we appreciate your comments. All right, next we have signed up to speak is a Hitesh Patel. Yes, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours.
Yes.
Oh, yes, could you pull the mic down just a little bit or get it closer to you some? Pull it towards you? This top part right here?
It's good.
Pull this down towards you like that. Perfect, yes, that's awesome. Thank you, Hitesh.
My name is Hitesh Patel. I live in two seven one two Sunset Court, Pearland, Texas. And I would like to support Marriott Motel.
Okay, thank you, Hitesh, we appreciate that, thank you. Okay, next we have, I'm trying to read this handwriting, what do you think this is, Councilman?
Yeah.
The, all right, we'll try the address. It looks like the address is nine nine two seven H A N. Does anybody recognize that address? Does your home address start with a nine nine two seven? I have bad vision, so I'm apologizing if I'm not reading this correctly. Okay, so if you signed a speaker participation form and I did not call your name, please come up to speak during the public hearing when we open up the call for that. Next we have a Vinod Patel at one one zero two Passion. Yes, hello, sir. If you could state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vinod Patel. The address is eleven two Passion Flower Way, Richmond, Texas. I think the Marriott is a good product to have in Manville, Texas. In the hotel industry, this is one of the good properties, one of the best properties you can have in Manville. And I support my people for that, to have a Manville in this town. That's all I got to say.
Great, thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. So going back one to the former registration form, the councilwoman here to my right, Robby Robinson, believes that the first name is Nero? Okay, maybe Nero's no longer here. Maybe Nero left. Okay, next we have is a Zen Hak or Zia Hak? Yes, hello, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Zia Huck. My address is two two zero two Drake Falls Drive, Pearland, Texas. Thanks for having us, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and the council. Just a few things that I've heard through the meeting today, this is my first time attending a meeting at your city, is that it's a city on the rise. I've heard all the different departments asking for funding and the question comes back to is that how many of these items are actionable items that are very important to you? The reason that's being asked is because the funding might be an issue. The reason the funding may be an issue is because the tax dollars might be lower than expected, the tax revenue. The one way I would anticipate to increase that would be to bring in businesses that could bring tax dollars to the city so that it can create more safety for the community because that was the major things was you've got a community center, you've got Starlink, you've got the animal control. And all of these would provide safety to the community, but they can't provide safety to the community without tax dollars coming in to pay for these safety items. Then on another note, you've got two hotels in this, or one hotel and one motel in this town. One was built in two thousand nine, the other was built so long ago that I couldn't even find out the date of when it was built. The Best Western was renovated in two thousand fourteen. How many have you traveled to a city or a town for a wedding for your family and either you stay at a lower level property with your family feeling unsafe or you drive to another city and stay there? If somebody's having a wedding, a quinceanera or an event in this town here, would you want them to stay in this town near you, near your family, or would you want them to go drive up to Pearland and take their tax dollars to Pearland? Because that's what will happen. They'll pay for the room there and all that tax revenue is going to stay right there. And these are people, nobody comes to Pearland or Manville or League City because they heard about it on the global scale. They come to visit family. And you don't want to be known as a town that has a, you know, twenty-five year old hotel, that's the, that's the go-to. You guys showed a video that showcased the town and how it's grown. You guys have increased four times in the last two years, I think you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. And for that growth, I'm surprised that the lodging industry hasn't grown. You have a community center that might become, it might be in the works, which may have bands, which may have comedy shows, which may have events. Where are these people going to stay? Are they going to stay in Manville at the unknown date of construction motel or at the two thousand nine Best Western? So you've got, you've got concerns of security and safety, but I feel like a Marriott property would probably alleviate some of that by, by bringing tax dollars to the town. So I'm in favor of the Marriott Hotel. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Zia. Next we have Laura Cooper.
I'm presenting.
You're presenting, okay, we'll move on to that then. Next we have a Stephen Russell. Hello, Stephen, if you could please state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours, thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, Stephen Russell, seven two two zero man, Cemetery Road in Manville, Texas. This property is adjacent to my property and the, to the, you know, I've heard so far that a lot of input from a lot of people who aren't familiar with Manville. So, you know, you know, and some of their points I can agree on. Marriott's a nice hotel. Location is poor. And I had a lot of time, so yeah, I was going to come up here and wing it and it was going to be awesome, y'all were going to be dazzled, but I had time to make a lot of notes. And so, pardon me just one second while I, while I pull those up on my dying phone because, you know, because it's kind of nervous standing in front of y'all, I ain't going to lie, you know, it takes a second.
Well, Stephen, we know you needed time, so that's why we took so long at the beginning because we wanted to give you time for your questions.
All right, so, you know, I said, we use, you know, terms like cohesion and, you know, that property is just not cohesive with, with the Callahan subdivision. It would be great cohesive, real close to two eighty-eight. It's not, it's not cohesive with the area that they're projecting. And we also, you know, you said, you know, as it is in Manville is how it is in heaven. Well, in heaven, I really don't think you have a four story hotel looking into your yard because it literally, when I say it abuts, it is adjacent to my property, my fence line, their fire lane, their building. So, you know, as it is in, Manville as it is in heaven, I hope, and I hope that's without a hotel. So the, you know, so when I built this property, I built it between two homes, actually. There was a home at the corner at one time on Highway six and Cemetery Road and there was another house. I built my home in between there and I knew that in the zoning, that there was an opportunity, there was a possibility that the lot directly to my south was going to be a light commercial property. At the time when I built it, there's like, well, you don't have, with the zoning comes with, you don't have to worry about being an apartment, you don't have to worry about it being a trailer park, you don't have to worry about it being a hotel and you don't have to worry about it being a Manville, a landfill. Dude, you're good on that aspect and I built accordingly. You know, I built, I built my place for privacy. I built it way off the road, as much privacy I could get and with the understanding that there would be, that there could possibly be development directly to my south. And I was okay with that and I still am okay with that. What I'm not okay with is the hotel. It doesn't fit with the community. You know, I do have concerns, you know, where people take a lot of, a lot of promises, you know, they're going to do this, they're going to do that. Somebody come into a hotel, the first thing they're going to do is say, huh, that's Cemetery Road, I wonder if there's a cemetery? Because that's where your mind goes when you drive on the road called Cemetery Road. So it's going to get a lot of traffic down to and from our little quaint cemetery and that's just going to be unavoidable. You know, you're going to have, they talk about people coming in from out of town to stay there, you're going to have truck drivers and people trying to stay there. There's not parking. You know, I guess if you could put it on large, they could park maybe a truck on Large Avenue or, but, you know, parking is going to be an issue for people coming in with like eighteen wheelers, things like that. You know, that's an issue. All hotels start off as a nice new property. They start off great. Age happens and I'm looking in the mirror, I'm finding more ages happening every day. I try to stop it, but it just does. With age comes a deterioration, a deteriorating factor, you know, at some point, somebody decides that it's not, that the property isn't doing what they want, they pass it on. The next thing you've got the Knights Inn or the Crystal Palace, as I like to call it down in Alvin, it's just the nature of age. We say we look to the future and I'm looking to the future and, and I see an aging hotel, a hotel that's going to age because it's inevitable on the borderline of my property. It's, it's disturbing, I don't know. You know, we talked, just got a big done about fire department. I do have a concern that, you know, you're going to put a four story building right here, a fire lane from my house and we don't have a ladder truck. If it does catch on fire, heaven forbid, and we pray, I'll pray that nothing like that would ever happen, you know, we're waiting to get a, you know, going to wait till we get a, call somebody in Pearland and they get their fire, they get their ladder truck together and get it down there. It's, it's not, it's the wrong place, it's the wrong, this is it, it's just the wrong place. I want them to have the hotel, it's just not conducive. If, you know, we said we were going to have zoning at some point, somebody decided zoning, well, let's stick to the zoning, the light commercial zoning, put the hotel, there's some other properties zoned for a hotel closer to two eighty-eight where it makes more sense, directly on Highway six where it makes more sense, not off a Highway six on a residential road. And the people who, you know, who say this is great, I don't think a lot of them has driven through the little Callahan subdivision area because all you have to do is drive through there and you realize that this is not the place that screams, build me a Marriott. And that's just what I want to say. You know, it's zoned light commercial, let's just live with the zoning that we've assigned to it, that I built around, that, what it was, light commercial, that's what fits in with the, with the little area. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Russell, you did a great job, thank you for being here tonight. Next we have a Jan Weed. Ms. Jan, if you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record, the floor is yours, thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, my name is Janet Weed, I live at sixty-seven oh three Crest Ridge, Manville, Texas. I made a chart, if any of you would like a chart, I will be glad to give you a copy of it. But I put the pros and cons of, about this hotel. The pros are, it does increase the city revenues, it is taxable, taxable commercial property, but it's better suited for two eighty-eight with easy on, easy off access. We do not deny that Manville needs a hotel, it is the location. There will provide job opportunities for twenty-plus personnel, it is a man- It is a Manville commercial development. Marriott can buy or build anywhere. As of 6/13/25, Marriott's worth, Marriott's worth was $69.84 billion. So they can build wherever they want to. They do not have to choose Cemetery Road in Manville, Texas to build a hotel. They own 8,700 properties worldwide. Uh, and the Cemetery Road property is probably cheaper than 288 is why they want to build where they want to build. Um, the cons against it, it was completely, uh, it was opposed by the PD&amp;Z Committee with a unanimous vote last week. It was, it is opposed by the constituents that live in the subdivision that Cemetery Road is a main artery for us to get in and out on. Our property values are going to be affected. There are safety issues for community homes and families. We will have excessive lighting pollution from a hotel. We will have increase in crime. We will have increase of Highway 6 traffic with an estimated 342 cars per day coming in and out. That means 342 out, 342 in for a total of 684 cars per day. The increase of traffic for Cemetery and Road and Lewis Lane, uh, will, uh, also be affected by that number that comes in and out of a hotel for the simple reason, when you can't get out on 6, you're going to look for an alternate route, just like I look for an alternate route every single day to get out of my subdivision. Uh, we will need increased police oversight because I don't care what expensive hotel you build in the world, there's crime there. And I can give you a, I won't do it unless you want me to, but I can give you a headline from the national news of a person who assaulted someone in a high-rise, high-dollar hotel. Um, there's insufficient support from the Manville Fire Department and not that it's the personnel, but it's the fact that we do not have a ladder truck that will reach a four-story, um, development. And if you want a new fire truck, it will cost you $20 million to the tune of five to six years of lead time. It adjoins the Russells' property who they built with, as you just heard Mr. Russell say, with some assurances of what would and not, would not be built there. Uh, note that also hotel customers, when they're in a four-story building, can look directly into their property. It will affect the peaceful and quiet neighborhood that currently exists. Increased traffic will prevent families and children from riding bikes and playing outside. At the PD&amp;Z, um, meeting that they had last week on my way home, there was a family of five out riding their bicycles in the neighborhood. You will not want your children or yourself to be riding bicycles with a hotel on the corner of Cemetery Road when our, when our roads will then, the access roads within our neighborhoods will be being used. Uh, current residences will have more difficulty getting onto Highway 6 and/or 1128 as well as returning to the streets where our homes are located. Um, I am very thankful that I live in America and all these gentlemen that have spoken on behalf of, um, the Marriott Hotels, uh, could come and speak, but I'm sorry, they do not have ownership in Manville like I do or like all these other people here do. They, they have no, they, they don't spend their money here, they don't live here, they don't send their children to school here, they have no ownership of being citizens of Manville, Texas. So, you know, if you don't live here, how can you support a hotel that does not even affect you? This does not affect them. It affects us who live in the subdivision bordered by Cemetery Road. And I would just like to add one last thing is that as Manville develops, build sensibly rather than just building to add another building, i.e. the storage unit on Cemetery Road is an eyesore to our homes and our, and has compromised our property values. Be aware of property values of, of us homeowners. So, and our surrounding community roads, our infrastructure, uh, needs support. We, our roads have, I don't know if you folks have been down, uh, Sem, uh, Lewis Lane lately, but it's like a roller coaster. Um, and, and we have no shoulders. We do not have a lot of street lighting. So when you build this kind of facility at the, at the beginning of a subdivision, uh, we're in trouble because there's not lighting there. There's not roads that you're going to have a lot of people off in the ditches because they're not used to ditches like we are. So I just want to ask you as council members, when things like this come up, be very aware of where we're placing these things and be very aware of our infrastructure that cannot support a, a hotel of this size. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jan. Um, hey, Ms. Jan. Ms., uh, Ms. Jan, I'm going to have you, um, take some more steps. If you can give us the, the chart so we can take a look at that. Need to make sure you get your 10,000 steps in a day, right? Yes, ma'am.
My pleasure.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you need a copy, Tammy? Okay. If we could make sure, we, if we could make sure to give Ms. Tammy Bell a copy for the record.
I hope I've got it.
If not, I can give her mine.
You did your homework, Jan. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah, tonight you go for their new fire truck. It really is.
All right. So we now have one final speaker participation form that's been filled out and this is, uh, no disrespect, but this is Mr. Russell's better half. This is, uh, Ms. Brandy Russell. So Ms. Brandy, if you could just come forward, state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hey, Brandy Russell, 7220 Cemetery Road in Manville, Texas. Um, as Mr. Russell said, I live directly adjacent to the, um, to the proposed hotel and I am adamantly opposed to, to having this here. If you watch the video from last week, you, you'll see that we came out in full force opposing this hotel for, for all the reasons. And the zoning committee agreed unanimously that this is going to negatively impact our roads, our traffic, our drainage, our property values, our privacy, our safety. So today I just want to kind of focus on the safety part of it. Um, in the video you said that, um, we're prioritizing safety for families. Um, the manager, the city manager mentioned that the core value that we're focused on right now is safety. And last week, the, the applicant said that we're acting like they're going to come in a mile or two miles into our, into our neighborhood and that he assured us they're not going to bypass Large Avenue. But my question is, how are they not going to bypass Large Avenue? When the hotel deteriorates, because they don't all start out, Best Western didn't start out as a 25-year-old hotel, it deteriorated, just like this one's going to. And when it does, and when the criminals move in, are they going to say, oh, we can't, we can't rob that house, we can't kidnap that child, we can't vandalize that cemetery because we're not supposed to pass Large Avenue? No, they're not going to say that. They're going to do it because you can't dictate what people do once they're there. Oh, lost my place. Um, anyway, um, the only way to ensure that we're not going to bring crime into our neighborhood with this hotel is by not putting it there in the first place. Secondly, the, you know, we talked about the risks, but what about the benefits? Okay. They said it would bring maybe 20 jobs. The hotel tax, yeah, we'll get taxed for the hotel, but we can only use that tax for things related to tourism. Um, we'll get sales tax, but any other business that's already light commercial that fits the existing zoning, we could get those sales taxes from. So the risk, traffic, drainage, property value, privacy, crime rates. Benefits, maybe 20 jobs for a city of 17,000 people and a visitor center? I mean, yeah, that would be nice to have, but at what expense? Putting our, our neighbors and our, our families at risk? And if they put Large Avenue through, that's going to go directly to our elementary school. Which brings me to my last point. In 2021, city council approved the 721 accommodation zoning for a plot of land next to Redeemer Church. So are they going to put a hotel down there also? Is this going to be a, are we going to have three hotels? Because if they put one down there, nobody's coming to this one. And my question is, if we already have a piece of land that's zoned on an appropriate road that can support the traffic, away from homes that aren't going to flood and depreciate, away from elementary schools, then why are we considering putting it in this very old, very rural neighborhood where nobody wants it? I mean, I keep listening and the people who are for this don't even live here. They're not even from our city. And the city council members, you know, we chose y'all to represent the voice of the citizens. And we're telling you, we don't want this. We do not want this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandy. So what we're going to do now is we're going to open up the first call for those wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing. And what we'll do, just because there's still a lot of you here, we'll keep, we'll stay organized with it. We're going to go row by row to see if anybody wishes to speak during this first call. Then we'll do the second call and the third call in case we miss anyone or anyone builds up the, the, uh, the courage to come up and speak. So would anybody on the first row like to speak on the subject of the public hearing? Yes, ma'am, I'll count you as the first row. So if you'd like to come forward first, please state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, of course. Uh, my name is Audrey Player, Dr. Audrey Player. I stay at 7207 Cemetery Road, directly next to the U-Haul, which is the eyesore. Absolutely.
You're the lady that got our property values.
Absolutely. So I, and Ms. Russell, hello neighbor. Um, and Mr. Russell, um, you mentioned a very important point, uh, that I have been contending with ever since U-Haul moved in and I see the same problem going to be with the hotel and that is drainage. Um, and, you know, I've, I've spent a substantial, a substantial amount of money on my property just building it up, you know, because of the U-Haul. And I see that, and, and I'm, I'm forecasting that when, and first of all, I'm, I'm against the, the Marriott. And I see that what's being proposed for the Marriott is it's going to eliminate a lot of grass that's going to, you know, potentially lead to the drainage that Ms. Russell mentioned. And nobody had mentioned drainage before. And drainage, drainage is a huge problem. Before the, before the U-Haul moved in next to me, I had Harvey, I had no problems whatsoever. Uh, and, you know, we're, we're replacing grass with concrete and that's going to be a huge concrete, huge amount of concrete. And it's going to be, in addition to being next to Ms., the Russells', it's going to be right across the street from me because I'm 7207 Cemetery Road. And, uh, I, I don't know that I can deal with another drainage issue. You talk about safety. I'm, I'm not as concerned about the safety as I am about the drainage or the potential lack of drainage and, and flooding that I'm potentially going to get on my property. Uh, and like I said before, I've already spent enough money on it and I don't want to spend anymore. That's it. And thank you, by the way.
Thank you, Ms. Audrey. Dr. Audrey. Is there anyone on the first row that would wish to speak on the subject of this public hearing? Yes, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the record and I love your shirt, by the way.
My name is Moises Delau and I live in Alvin, Texas. Uh, yeah, so, um, you know, I was looking at both sides, but I do see a, a good benefit out of this is for, uh, the emergency reason, right? In case we get a flood, right? Or in case there, there's a tornado or hurricane hits, you know, like last time when we had the freeze, it was hard to get a hotel. People were driving around, you know, Alvin, you couldn't even go to Alvin, you had to drive far, out far just to find a hotel. So I think it, it would benefit us and, you know, it's like they were talking about the shelter, right? Well, this is an extra, this is more rooms for people that are local that could find instead of having to drive out far. So I think, I mean, I'm for it because I think it would benefit Manville, Texas and the surrounding areas, Alvin and everybody around. So yeah, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name's Betty Martin. I live at 7516 Palmetto here in Manville. I'm on the south side of Highway 6. Um, I do agree drainage and flooding is a major problem here. I've lived here all, most all of my life, started second grade here, so I've lived here 60 years. So, um, I'm, I'm concerned about drainage. Uh, on the south side, you know, the last big flood we had, City Hall flooded. This building wasn't here yet, I don't think. And of course, everything goes, flows over highway, over Highway 6 and we, you know, it floods and backs up against the railroad track. So the south side gets, really gets flooded. So that's a problem, but, uh, to the people who are in support of the hotel, I'm opposed to it, the location. I think just about everybody here, we're not opposed to another hotel. It, you know, it might be beneficial, but the location is the problem. We don't need it in the residential area. Uh, it needs to be here, like between here and Highway, uh, 288 where commerce, we can, that's commercial. So, uh, that's, that's the biggest problem I have with it is the location, it's the wrong location. The product's okay, the location's wrong for Manville.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. All right, we will move to the second row. Anybody on the second row wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing? Yes, ma'am. If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. I am Elvira Perkins and I live on 20710 Georgia Street, Manville, Texas. So we've been here, like she said, almost all my life since I was in second grade. I've seen Manville grow and I've seen things come and go. But that is a neighborhood where not only did we grow up as children, our children have grown up there and now our grandchildren are coming to visit and we take bike rides and we enjoy our neighborhood. We go to the vet, we go to the bridge, we go to the schools and it won't be the same. We won't be able to do that. And with so much money spent on that beautiful elementary, why do you want a hotel where they can look out windows at kids? It just doesn't make sense. All these type of businesses that you're going to put there, you really need to keep those kids into consideration. Those are elementary students. You just built the school. So that's my biggest concern. And like you said, everything starts out shiny and new, yes, but what happens when? Best Western was shiny and new. That hotel on Highway 6, I don't even know what it is. But eventually, it didn't start out that way. It started out, they started out all nice and new and even the little Plaza Center across from that, their processing, it's, you know, a little chatty, I don't know. So does that, does that mean that the Hill, the Marriott Courtyard is going to come in and make everything else rise and be better? I mean, I, for that, for where, I don't mind a Marriott, I don't want it in our neighborhood where we are, have all raised our kids and our kids are going to school right there. I don't want it there. So I am opposed and I, I hope that y'all listen to the citizens of Manville so that we can stay Manville. I know we're going to grow, we're just, we could, we'd have to grow so fast and on that side. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Elvira. Anyone else on the second row wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing?
Andy Staten, 20704 Georgia Street. These are my neighbors, my friends. Um, Marriott's a beautiful, it's in our, in our handout, beautiful place and it just, the, the location is wrong. It's, we moved to the area because of peaceful, nice streets and we ride bicycles nearly every day and like, like Vera said, the beautiful schools all around us and I just think it's the wrong place. I'm, I'm against it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will now go to the third row. Anybody on the third row wishing to speak on the subject of the public hearing? Okay. Oh, yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and, uh, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Nicole McClinton, 6918 Alabama Street, Manville, Texas. Um, I'm opposed to the Marriott, um, location. I'm not opposed to, um, the hotel, but at that location, um, it's not conducive to our neighborhood. I feel that coming from Houston, being born and raised in Houston, watching the different hotels and motels being built in the neighborhoods, eventually, like they said, the hotels, they start off shiny and new. It starts off with one owner, um, and then ownership changes hands so many different times to, well, uh, the original owner may have had good intentions, but owners after that sees it as a dollar sign, uh, a profit. It starts off with one owner and then ownership changes hands so many different times to, well, the original owner may have had good intentions, but owners after that sees it as a dollar sign, a profit sign for them. Everyone that is for the hotel, Mayor, when you were reading out the different people that were for the hotel, Mississippi, Pearland, Alvin, none of those people actually live and pay taxes in Manville. I'm sure the investors that are here today that are for the hotels, they're not constituents of Manville. They do not pay taxes there, here in Manville, rather. We have grandchildren. They love to come and ride their bikes. And when we're speaking of the, the streets, it's hard enough for us to even get City of Manville to come fill a hole on Lewis Lane, on Cemetery, on Alabama, on Georgia, on Mississippi. It's hard for us to even get them to come out and fill a hole. And you want to put a hotel that is going to bring traffic in and out on a two-lane road in the neighborhood? It's not a good fit and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on the third row wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing? All right, we will go to the fourth row. Anybody, Mr., okay, all right, Mr. Simmons, if you want to come up first, sir, state your name and address for the record and then, sir, we'll go to you next on the, on the right-hand side there.
My name is David Simmons. I live at 7222 Mississippi Road in Manville, Texas. So if you remember, Mr. Russell's address was very similar number to mine. I'm the first house that you, first site-built house that you come to on Mississippi Road off of Highway 6. And so the, the storage unit place, it's, I mean, when we bought the property, we bought the property because we wanted to see the stars, we wanted to have a country feel to it. And now we've got, you know, right there at that, where the, where the storage unit is, that was a tree farm. Next to that is a pecan orchard, just beautiful property, lots of trees, lots of nice trees. And, and so now we, we got a storage unit to look at. And then we would have a four-story hotel also in, in view. And let me ask you a question, City Council. Would you buy a house within that eyesight of a hotel? Would you want to live that close to a hotel? I don't. And so I request that the city, request the owner of this property or strongly suggest that they survey the community around that property and find out what the local community would like to have in that place, in that spot. Personally, I'd like to see a city park. I'm sure it's got some very nice trees already there that a hotel would get rid of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. If you could please state your name and address for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
Lisa Leca, 7002 Louisiana, Manville. I oppose this hotel. I mean, we, my family's been here 40 years and I know Manville's going to grow. I have no problem with it. It needs to be towards 288. I'm going to bring up the drainage because I build a shop on my property. I don't know if y'all know the code or not. It's 12 inches above grade or 18 inches above the road, whichever is higher. My shop is three foot off the grade of my property. So if you build, I don't know if anybody surveyed, if that land is lower than Highway 6, that means you'll be 18 inches over Highway 6. Where's that water going to go? It's going to go to Russell's property. It's going to go to Highway 6. You can put a retention pond there all you want. That's a temporary fix. The drainage is not good back there anymore since we've been growing. Mr. Harry knows, he lives back there too. He knows the roads, the roads, if you're going to cars, it's hard to get through. If you're pulling a trailer, you might as well just stop and let the other car go through. We can't handle the traffic back up in there. I didn't move, I moved to Pearland for a little bit, moved back here. I didn't move back here because I want the city to be in my backyard. I would have stayed in Pearland if I wanted to do that. Show me a hotel that's been built in front of subdivision, anywhere. They, I know some of you people don't consider that subdivision because it's not like Lakeland or Blue or whatever the other one is and all the other subdivisions around here, but that is a subdivision with acreage. That's why people buy it. That's why I came back, is I want the acreage. So I think this hotel just really needs to be considered in a different location besides right there. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else on the fourth row looking to speak? All right, so we'll go you in the blue shirt first and then, sir, we'll go to you next. If you could please state your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for taking me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. My name is Tushar Patel. I live at 9314 Balsam Gap in Missouri City, Texas. I've been living there for the past 21 years. I want to take back in time. 1980, Highway 6 was one-lane highway. If Sugar Land would have said, "We don't want any businesses here," you think Sugar Land would have been where it is right now? All the businesses and stuff have helped the ISD grow. People want to move from other countries, from other states, California, New York, to, to Texas and particularly to Sugar Land. Why? Because Sugar Land Mayor and the councilmen, they allowed businesses to flourish. When we have such a good brand of Marriott coming to Manville, it'll help promote this town. It'll promote education. So I think I'm for the thing. I have a few, few other things that I've heard that people kind of say there's a drainage issue. Well, the drainage issue can be resolved for this property. You know, we are, we are, we can plan on getting a retention pond where the water can be stored, we can, we can reuse the water for the lawns, it, you know, it's not an issue there. Some, some people mentioned they don't like the hotel location. Well, would you rather have an apartment complex where people are, are living in a home? If they have no job, they have, they'll be staring at your house? Or would you have a hotel? How many people go to a hotel and stay in the hotel room for days and out and, and watch the neighbors? They are coming here to go travel. They don't go there to stay at the motel looking at neighbors' houses all the time. They, they have the curtains closed. No one, no one cares who lives around there. Another point I want to make is a trailer. Someone mentioned that 18, you know, 18-wheelers they come. How many 18-wheelers have you seen in Marriott motels? They're so expensive, they won't be able to afford to stay there. 18-wheelers have rooms in the back where they can actually stay. They don't need a motel hotel to come stay. So I think the, all these points people have made, it's, it's a not, it's a non-starter. I think we should have a Marriott motel there at this location. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, good evening, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the record and then the floor is yours.
Terrence Price, 200618 Georgia Street. It's ironic, I come in behind that. Do you have a hotel in your neighborhood?
I did, I did, yes, I wanted.
All right, hey, hey, well, hold up, hold up. We're going to keep, sir, if you can make sure to speak to us, we're not going to have a conversation back and forth. Thank you, guys.
Okay, cool, all right. I live at 20618 Georgia Street.
Thank you, sir.
You come down 6th to Cemetery Street, you make a left, go to Georgia, make a right. I did the little drive around, remember, one night coming in. If you had a hotel there, the shortcut, instead of taking the, the roller coaster road, you'd left on Scott Street, you come down, you make a right on, I don't know what the name of that street is, but it is in there and you make a right, you come around, curve into Cemetery Street, that street will be tremendously busy. It ain't wide enough for that. No sidewalks. My neighbor, Mr., I'm speaking about my neighbor now, Mr. Andy, he walks every morning with his dog. No sidewalks. You talking about safety? He had to get in the grass if two vehicles came by at one time. That's an issue. Fire trucks. You have a four-story building, no fire truck, who that's going to be lobbying on? The city or that's the hotel? One incident, one death, is it worth it? These people talking about, several people come up here speaking about how they're opposing, they want, they don't oppose of, they want to put it, it brings in money. That's fine. Go put, go build in Alvin, go build in your neighborhood. I mean, we don't, we're not opposing of the, the hotel, we're just opposing of the neighborhood, the location. I mean, what's wrong with back this way toward 6? You know, it's, it's plenty of land back there. I mean, and I just heard somebody speak about the, the money and the properties these people have. They got the money to do it. Go, go back toward 6 with it. And spoke about the 18-wheelers. Believe it or not, that's my job. They don't want to go in the hotel. They're going to sit there and idle all night long with their engine running. That's not, I mean, that's not appropriate to Mr. Russell next to him. That's not good for him. He got to listen to that engine all night long. What's he going to do? He going to call Manville Police Department, Disturbment. There's another issue. This is not the right location for that hotel. That's my opinion. And I'm just sitting here listening and watching everyone, just about, I'm going to say 50, 60% of the, the people that's here is in that location. There's a lot of people that are, that's for it, that's not even living in that location. I don't know how you even can listen to them. That's not, I mean, they, they, they don't have to, it's not going to affect them. It's affecting us. And the flood, the flood program or whatever, however you all put it, I caught Prehill building, building, pouring a driveway, not near as much concrete that they going to have to have to build this place. I literally caught hell building that driveway. It's that they're six weeks waiting on a permit to get it done right, to get it done legally. Now, the first thing they were complaining about, no runoff, nowhere for this water to go. You can't do it. How are you going to build this hotel then? Is it going to have concrete or gravel? Because now I have to keep gravel. I can't have concrete. My driveway is 90% gravel because of the cold or you ain't got no runoff, you ain't got nowhere for the water to go. How is they going to run the water? Next to the building? Next to the next door neighbors? I mean, that, I mean, look at that, look at that storage unit. I feel for them people next though. I mean, when it rain over there, you, I mean, you, the water going, it ain't, it's going downhill. I mean, they, I mean, it's not, it's not right. I mean, do something about this, man. Don't let this, don't, do not let this hotel be built at that location. I'm not saying don't build it, build it somewhere else. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else on the fourth row looking to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you could come forward, state your name and address for the record. Floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name's Debbie Williams and I live at 7502 Lewis Lane in Manville, Texas. I did attend the P and D meeting last week and 25 people spoke and they were all opposed to this hotel being located at the entrance of residential neighborhood. The streets near there, there's no sidewalks, there's no shoulders, there's, the property values are going to decrease. They talked about traffic with 680 cars a day. And when you talk about 680 cars a day, somebody mentioned that's in and outs of, of people coming in and out, not like there's going to be 680 actual cars, but in and outs of the hotel area. You know, we could have crime issues. I wrote all kinds, all kinds of stuff here. Night pollution with the lights, unwanted noise. One of the things that I wanted to point out that I saw today is on the video, somebody mentioned, okay, we're a city on the rise, but we don't want to be Sugar Land. We don't want to be Houston. You know, we want to stay small. And what y'all showed on the video and talked about is small-town life and community and our culture and our safety. We don't need a four-story hotel at the entrance of residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on the fourth row or any previous rows looking to speak on the subject of this public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will move to the fifth row. Anybody on the fifth row looking to speak on the subject of this public hearing? All right, keep on moving back here. What about the sixth row? We're almost at the end. All right, hello, sir. If you could please state your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm Rick Taylor. Live at 20611 Georgia for the last 30 years and I want to make sure everybody knows I object to this. It's not appropriate for where we're at. Not even counting everything that my neighbors have said, especially drainage, lighting and traffic.
Thank you, Rick. All right, I'm not sure how many exact rows there are, so is there anyone else that is wishing to speak on the public, on the subject of this public hearing? Yes, ma'am. If you could please state your name and address for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hi, I'm Leanne Worler. I live at 20611 Georgia Street and I've lived here about 13 years. And I am from Sugar Land. Yeah, I lived in Greatwood and from 91, so I saw Sugar Land grow. We don't want to be Sugar Land. That you can't move there. The traffic is so bad. The light pollution is insane. You know, my son, who is 31 now, we used to go over the bridge, the Brazos River Bridge, and he'd say, "Oh, we're going into the dark." And he'd be so excited because it truly was dark. It is horrible light show now, HEB, everything. And, you know, I love Greatwood, but this is special. We have acreage. You know, we can do stuff. We are not right on top of our neighbors and I love my neighbors. But we don't need this here. We don't need this all the lights. Down 288 would be perfect. I'm all for courtyard area, I don't care, but just not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leanne. Is there anyone else on any row? Yes, sir. All right, we're going to need you to stay focused on the subject of the public hearing though, all right? I watched the PD and Z meeting. I watched you, sir. If you could state your name and address for the record and thank you for being here.
Rodney O'Tanis, 6918 Alabama Street, Manville, Texas. Okay. I understand that Manville need money. We need a hotel. We need a hotel there. People make our money somewhere. We need a four-story eyesore on the corner because there's nothing else but four stories on that corner. I understand that it want to bring 20 jobs to rent. We, Manville residents, that's going to be employed or it's going to be the Patel family employed. We trying to keep this city, what we stay, and I was from all that areas, Manville Plaza, Manville Plaza, acreage, peace and quiet, no sidewalks. We have all the time to train. I mean, we got a, we get the streets fixed. I appreciate y'all taking the streets, but the hotel going to run on way too much traffic. It has no ins and outs. It's going to disturb everything. Every hotel afterward become a motel. Motel brings on traffic and everything goes well. While we are now to let that happen, it shouldn't be possible. We ain't got a property motel, uh, what motel or hotel they going to build? Put it on 288 where all the hotel divisions at, where all of them be together. So you can pick and choose, like the gas station, on every corner, there's a gas station. Pick and choose which one you want. Don't come way down here. We ain't have a grid. Manville can't support the traffic. I was this, I was a racer in here. It's hard getting across. How they come in, how they get out? Like I said, go down Lewis Lane, it's a roller coaster. The schools, you can't drive, you don't need a street, man. You can't go fast enough. They got to find a way in and out of that subdivision. They say that it's not going to be in a subdivision. I don't know what you call not in a subdivision if you, if you on the corner. I know I'm pretty sure closer than 1,000 feet from the nears haws. Same thing about the storage center. They have to fold it out, but it can fold it in. They have to vote it out, but it can vote it in. Question would, did I vote now? Same thing about this hotel. If there ain't nobody that's in Manville, that live in Manville, want that hotel. Hotel can go anywhere, 288, it can go 518, we don't care. You know, if it is in Frenchwood, we sure don't want to be used. We see them rise, or it rising too fast. Too fast gonna run on the wrong thing. I knew y'all kicked me out last week. Got no feeling. I moved to Manville, I don't matter about prices, up and down, I'm gonna die in there. I bought this house, and this is the last house I'm gonna buy. You can barely know that property, but I don't want to see no hotel. I don't see people looking out there when you say the curtain gonna be closed. Well, I go to hotels, I don't want the curtain to look around. I want to see what people got off. That's gonna be a bad deal, even with the fire. If something should happen to that hotel, catch a fire, no, it gonna be a bunch of dead people now. Because we don't have a fire truck. If we did have a fire truck, I think the water supply would supply enough to cut it out. So that's why they want a Marriott hotel, tell them, take the Marriott to 288. It's plenty property. It might cost them a little bit more money, but the money you gonna spend and the money y'all gonna save, it's a big difference. It's a big difference. So a little money, it's a small dummy, small commercial. That hotel, four-story, can't be small. That's gotta be heavy. So put a dunking dunk on it, some car stop, just kick for that something. Anything that will conserve the community, go, yeah, push out. I know it gonna bring some jobs, if you running, we make the money somewhere else. Put it on 288, their money still coming to Manville. It gonna man Manville subdivision, I mean, Manville area, city limits. That's a better place closer to, well, the mall and all that stuff at. We got an AGB, put the hotel by AGB. That way, people, people come to my house and visit with me, they come from my town, I'll provide them a place to stay in my house. Or you can go back home when you finish. It's simple. We only check the hotel, and I don't want my kinfolk up on me all day, anyway. So take the hotel. I mean, I understand that. Let's go with it. Let's get it all, if it's for Manville, I would say do it, but it's not for Manville. And you are not gonna benefit with any jobs, I guarantee. They don't hire any citizens, it's not gonna benefit us.
So why would we want to let it come here? They got plenty to pay, go to Sugar Land, go to Pearland. You said when the flood come, the hotel gonna benefit us. Yeah, for the price you gonna charge us, you gonna raise the price up. They always do that. They price gouge. So I would have a civic center, like y'all talking about spending money for. Let them stay there, 100 people, that's fine. That hotel gonna charge you, I guarantee it's gonna charge you more when hurricane come. They always do, they always will. And he talking about best western, you understand, it's going down. What are you gonna do when that go down? Is he gonna own it? Do America own it, or what? It's gonna go down, they never stay up. Then it gonna go from a hotel to a motel. And a holiday inn, then we have more traffic, more, everything. I ain't gonna call what's gonna happen. I ain't gonna predict what's gonna happen, but just look around. Now, I know you stay in the neighborhood in Manville and pretty much the rest of y'all. We want to keep it safe, safe to me, safe. We got enough with Highway 6, all the new cars coming down the street. We got the people riding the bicycles, even in my subdivision. I ain't never seen nobody riding a bicycle, but kids. I know I see horses, dogs, goats, not all these, 35 bicycles coming down the street. Just stay off of 1128 and Highway 6 because it's too much traffic. That hotel gonna bring way more than where the bikes gonna go. Y'all got bike wrecks, already cars hitting bikes. There's gonna be more than that. One of them could be one of your kinfolk. Could be, now, off the record, let them build, just build somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Rodney. Whenever you schedule your first stand-up performance, you let us know, and we'll be there, because... Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, is there anyone else here tonight that is wishing to speak on the subject of this? Ms. Wisniewski, thank you for being here tonight, ma'am. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Wisniewski. I live at 6215 Cemetery Road. Our neighborhood is a old neighborhood, old-fashioned, and we have zero sidewalks, zero. And all the families that are here tonight have talked about how they go out with their families and their children, and they ride their bicycles. We ride the bicycle, our bicycles and walk in the road. And we all watch out for each other's children and families. We know to look for them because we don't have sidewalks. So that is a big issue for traffic, as far as traffic is concerned. People who, which I didn't consider, hey, they're gonna come check out the cemetery, which I live back by the cemetery. You cannot drive two cars on my part of the road. You cannot do it. It doesn't, you have to pull over. We either pull over in the cemetery, or we pull over on the other side. Two cars cannot pass at the same time. So when I leave in the morning to go to school, I can't get out on Highway 6, takes me forever, and I can't get out on Lewis. So already with just our, the traffic that we have currently, it is not easy to get on the roads. So you add that hotel, it just doesn't work. And I had one other thing, and I lost my train of thought. But I am opposed to the hotel coming to this area, to right there. Out of all the citizens that spoke tonight, one person was for it that lived in Manville. We can put it in her neighborhood, although I suspect her neighbors would oppose it too. It's just not a great place to put a neighborhood, and I beg you, please do not allow that to happen. We vote you in, we are your constituents. I hope you speak for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we will officially do the second call for anybody that is wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing. Yes, ma'am. If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here.
I'm not gonna take a bunch of time. I just want to say...
Can you state your name and address?
Yes, I will. Andrea DeZarmo. I live at 20614 Georgia Street, Manville, Texas. I just agree with all my friends and neighbors. We live, I've been there for 16 years. Moved there for the quiet, for the, a little piece of land, a little piece of country. And I don't, I just, I oppose the hotel. It's in a bad place. I'd prefer you put it closer to 288. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we will do the third and final call for anybody wishing to speak on the subject. Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Alfred Ortiz. I'm at 5213 County Road, 538 Alvin, Texas. Yeah, I'm outside of Manville, barely. Okay, people haven't, also, the other thing is Cemetery Road goes to the cemetery. So you're gonna have all this traffic going through. I'm not opposed to Manville getting bigger. I'm opposed to the hotel being right there, because that's a neighborhood. It needs to maybe move someplace else. That's all I gotta say.
All right, anyone else? Final call, final call. Yes, ma'am. If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then the, thank you for being here tonight.
Hey, my name is Catherine Simmons. I live at 7155 Cemetery Road, so not too far in from where the hotel is being built. I think I'm just, for one, I agree with what everyone has said. Everything, every concern that has been brought is constantly on my mind as well. One thing I think about, and I'm bringing it up for the people I sit right next to, is, you know, kind of pushing this traffic towards the interior, right? I've seen the traffic study that they had put together, or like the numbers that they put together, and they're talking about 600 for a 24-hour day. Okay, so you have that, 300 and 300 in and out, and then you look at the peak hours AM and PM. So you're looking at 30 and 50. Well, as someone who has to commute to downtown every day for work, those AM and PM hours are absolute hell. You know, getting from Highway 6 to 288, it's already absolutely horrible. So you already have the normal traffic right now, already pushing their way through these roads that can barely handle two cars. I can't imagine when we're adding an additional 30, 50 cars, they're seeing the same traffic that we're seeing at our peak hours, and now they're wanting to do that, too. We already have a situation where Apple Maps, Google Maps will route you through people's neighborhoods, through homes, these roads that cannot handle the car traffic. So we would only be adding to that with a hotel at the end of our street, because we're blocking that entrance. We've got Lewis Lane, they're only gonna go through Cemetery Road and continue through the backroads to get to 288. The last thing I'll say is that road conditions from an infrastructure standpoint, you know, some other people have already mentioned that it's like a highway, or it's like a roller coaster when they drive on Lewis Lane or Cemetery Road. I think all of us are really familiar with it because we drive on it every day, but I can't imagine if just the regular traffic as it is, the roadway is already like that, we're adding all these other cars, it's only gonna get worse than what it currently is. And we already all complaining about it, so I can't imagine how much worse that would be. So I do oppose this hotel. I work in the roadway industry, so it's not a surprise for me to see developments and change coming. It's inevitable. I think everybody here knows that it's inevitable, especially if we want, you know, our city on the rise. But yeah, I think location is really important, and I just don't think this is the location for it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing? We will do the final call. You already spoke, sir. You got one time to speak, but I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, so we will officially close this public hearing at 9:38 PM. Thank you to everyone that spoke and submitted comments. Counsel, what I'd like to do with your approval to quickly move up Agenda Item Number 7, which is regarding Big Horn Cantina. Do I have y'all's consent to move that item up? Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna quickly move up Agenda Item Number 7 to consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2025-R-16. Dan, if you could give us a brief overview of this item? Or Tammy?
Mayor and counsel, this is a project that went to the Economic Development Corporation. And the Economic Development Corporation went through the, they got the application, went through the waiting period, had the public hearing unanimously. The president was absent the day of the vote, but everybody else voted in favor of the project. This would be a reimbursement for up to $150,000 to be used towards utilities, including impact fees and site improvements associated with the construction of the new restaurant facility next to Big Horn. The next step is City Council approving the resolution, and once that's approved, the board president and the city attorney will negotiate the clawback agreement and get that executed, and then we can move forward with our project.
Awesome, thank you, Tammy. Mr. Allen, thank you for being patient and waiting for us. You guys are good to go? Thumbs up? All right, thank you, sir. Counsel, any comments or questions regarding this agenda item? Hearing none, do I have a motion for this agenda item?
I have motion.
Okay, well, we have a, we have a motion from Councilwoman Robie Robinson. We have a second from the mayor pro tem. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Good job, Councilwoman. You're getting it down, you're getting it down. All right, so now we will jump back here. Alan, thank you for staying with us tonight. To regular agenda item number one, this is the subject of the public hearing, consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of Ordinance 2025-O-21. We do have the applicant here that has a presentation for us. If you guys would like to come forward and give us your presentation, we will then open it up to any comments or questions from counsel. Would you guys like to come forward and give your presentation?
Oh, yeah.
No, no, you're good, you're good. So what we'll do is we'll have you give your presentation, then we'll open it up to any counsel comments or questions. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Am I able to control here with this? Let's see. Do you have the clicker? All right, go on. It works here. That's fine. I won the big prize. So my name is Laura Cooper, and I am a business partner and a realtor for Yogesh Dabi, who is the owner and the financier of this project. I came here because I have a personal relationship with him. I've known him for four years. Don't know all of the gentlemen that stood up that aren't from in town. I'm from Danbury, and I sell in the entire Bressoria County area. And I just want to present to the council from a business perspective, this project. I also want to start by saying, because I am a local realtor, I do take into consideration the community, the people, their homes, that they, their residents are here, and I am actually very sensitive to that because of my job. So I don't want to come off as insensitive to them, but I do want to present the business aspects and some thoughts that I have on Yogi's behalf. So to give y'all some insight, Yogi is a Manville resident. So he lives off of Bissell Road, and he raised his kids here, too. So both of his boys, Raj and Rohan, graduated from Manville High School. And they also own a business on Highway 6, and he takes a ton of pride in living in Manville. He loves his community, and he's an extremely charitable person. I've seen it with my own eyes. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight because he travels a lot. So he's road tripping in an RV with his family and his adorable little daughter on the northwest of the United States of America. And he's, in my opinion, a really good person, and I want to make sure it's very clear that the Marriott is not financing this project. The Marriott with all of their thousands of properties, the majority of them are franchises. So Yogi is a Manville resident, and he's investing his money in this community that he loves, and he really does want to give back to. I think the heart of this motel, or this hotel, sorry, I said that, that's probably a big mistake. The heart of this hotel is, that's kind of my Texans, sorry, we call it all motel. But the heart of this hotel is really to provide an amenity for the community. So I know a lot of people are really focused on it bringing, like stranger danger into the town, but he really, at his heart, wants to provide an amenity that the community doesn't have. He's investing his money, his time, his heart into this project, and he owns the land. He bought the land from another local Manvillian? Is that what we call y'all? Manvelite, Manville, whatever? And she did that with gladness. She sold it to him with gladness, and she's been here for a long time. I'm sure a lot of people in here have done the research and know who she is. I've met her, she's a lovely lady. And this is his, this is his pet project for Manville. So I'm here today to just kind of give some insight into what he's thinking and the benefits to the community, and tried to help the team that's supporting this motel and that's gonna help run this project, explain to y'all the things that they see that are good about the motel for the city of Manville and the majority of the city of Manville residents. I do understand that the community that is behind this represents, I want to say probably about 1% or less of the community. I also wanted to make mention that I've lived in Houston my entire life in different areas, and I've seen Highway 6, all the way from the top to the bottom of that road, changed greatly over the decades. And unfortunately, this is what Highway 6 is. It is really just a business road. It's a business road everywhere you drive on it. I watched the northwest side of Houston, Highway 6, change greatly in my life. I'm from that corridor of the city. So let me tell you a little bit, let me go on here, give you an overview of what I'm gonna cover today. So today I'm gonna cover the focus on the value to the Manville community. I'm gonna talk a little bit about job creation and tax revenue. I'm gonna talk about safety and flood mitigation and the alignment with Manville's vision and strategic plan. I already told you about Yogi and kind of who he is. He is definitely a family man. He loves animals, he lives in the country, and he loves to travel. So that's probably part of why his heart for this motel, hotel, is very important, because he wants a safe and good place for the city's people to bring their families and friends to stay whenever there are wonderful events that do go on in the small town of Manville, Texas. He doesn't want to have people have to go outside of Manville. So talked about Yogi, who he is, talked about how he wants lodging for Manville residents, their friends and their families. I want to say that it's pretty obvious that the primary, the primary guest at this hotel is gonna be somebody that the people of Manville know. It's not gonna attract people from out of town. I don't think that people are gonna be looking to come to Manville from another town just because there's a Marriott here. It's gonna be the inverse. They're gonna know people here that are having events going on, like weddings, birthdays, big sports events at the high school, and they're gonna need a safe and clean place to stay that's nicer than what's already offered here. So that's one of his biggest focuses. One of the things he wants to do to try to attract local and keep local people here is to offer special rates to the community. So all the businesses, the schools, if there's another school coming into town for a football game, offer them really attractive group rates so they have somewhere to stay that's close to the school. And he wants to give, hold a 10% availability reserved just for locals and offer things like bereavement rates, so that whenever people in the community... have things like lose a family member, they have somewhere to stay nearby and don't have to drive 30 minutes to stay to a, at a hotel in Pearland. And mostly, he wants to have a good neighbor approach. And I know that's one of the things that the city of Manville values and he wants to have the same thing and offer that to the community where he wants to be an open door so that when people have issues with his hotel or with the construction project, that he, he wants to address those concerns and be a good citizen. How is he going to bring value to local businesses? Well, it's pretty obvious that if people have a place to stay in town, they're going to keep their money in town where they shop and they eat at local restaurants. I think that's extremely important in addition to the tax revenue that he's going to bring. He's actually going to be supporting local businesses and nobody here has really talked much about that, but if you're a small business owner, you want to keep people in Manville. And I know Manville values having the small businesses because you want to stay small, but you want to encourage business. Having something like this versus people going to the bigger town of Pearland to lodge and eat and shop, this is going to help keep people here. And again, it's going to be friends and family of the people that live here. And also, having the large brand of Marriott will help, help enhance the city's commercial appeal to bring other small businesses to the city. So I did a little bit of research and it looks like the community was surveyed and I feel like there are a lot of synergies between what the people of Manville said in these surveys and what the hotel will bring to the area. Some of the feedback that was given in this survey, and I want to say, y'all could probably correct me, it was at least 300 people that responded. They wanted new businesses. They wanted increase in property values and they wanted more job opportunities. They also wanted commercial development that appeals to and serves the Manville residents. I'm unsure how we can say that the hotel is not going to serve the Manville residents' families and friends because I feel like they're going to be the primary customers of the motel. And then according to the Manville Today report, you can see that as we've talked about in the past, tonight, that the population of this town is growing exponentially and we want to get ahead of things like lodging, accommodations. If we wait until the city continues to grow at a 4X pace, there's going to be nowhere for people to stay. Unfortunately, Highway Six, with the nature that it is, there are going to be country homes and acreage properties almost all along the whole entire thing and I think that the location is the biggest complaint. And I was trying to wrap my head around how to get around that very readily and I just don't see it when you have a willing and able participant who's willing to dump millions of dollars into the community on this property and also offer a very attractive accommodation for people, for people here in Manville. Jobs and tax revenue. So there are actually going to be probably at least 40 between part-time and full-time jobs offered at the motel. So there will be more jobs. This is a small town and 40 jobs does make a difference. People can assume that he's going to hire whoever he wants and people that don't live here, but I don't think that's true because I know him. I do think he's going to support the town and I do think he's going to hire local. And that's very important to a community, especially in the economy that we're living in. And this is going to create a broader tax revenue for Manville and it's going to give you estimated, the number I was given was between $300,000 and $500,000 a year. I heard the budget items earlier. That's a lot of money that the city can do a lot with. It's going to help, again, accommodate or attract local businesses and people to stay and shop in town. And then the infrastructure enhancements are paid for by him. So it's not costing the city. He is supporting the whole entire area drainage with his own funds and sidewalks and walking trails on a long, large avenue. And I think that that's important to note because he's not, he does not want to put a strain on the town. He's going to invest that money himself. So crime and safety concerns and traffic impact mitigation. I know that that's important. I've heard, I've heard it all. I do have a diagram. I'm going to put it up so everybody can look at it while I'm talking. So their focus is to provide as much access off of Highway Six as possible. You can see the red and the blue arrows. Cemetery Road would be a secondary access path. That is not the primary way that they're wanting to direct traffic into the property. So that makes more sense anyway. And even if you turned onto Cemetery Road and there's a driveway going into the motel, I just don't understand with proper signage how people are going to start driving randomly through the neighborhood. I know it will happen some. It's inevitable. But I don't necessarily think that with proper, proper driveways coming off of the main highway, how that's going to be a significant impact. So the other thing about the hotel that I think is an interesting concept is that compared to all the other uses of this property as it's currently sitting there, hotels are really a pretty quiet and low noise and low traffic commercial business. So at least it's something that you know and you know what, what happens with that type of business versus the many, many other types of business that could be put there. Regarding flood mitigation and natural disaster support, I do think it's interesting because I've done a lot of business with cities and I've done a lot regarding flooding. And I think we should definitely trust our city of Manville and our county engineers on the drainage situation. I'm not sure if we don't trust them, but I think that what I've seen over the course of the last many years, as the cities and the counties have gotten way more adept to flood mitigation, they're really good at it and they've undone a lot of the damage of the past where we've seen big flood events and they're really being hard on businesses, very hard on businesses. It actually makes a lot of projects I see completely financially inviable. So the fact that I see two whole acres of drainage on a 10-acre property, that's a big deal to a business person. That's a lot of land that you're not getting to use for profit, but it's getting used for flood mitigation. And I trust the county and I trust the city, the planners, the engineers to do their job and to protect the community. And so does Yogi. He doesn't, he doesn't want to do anything other than work with them and make sure that he's doing everything he can to, to put in proper drainage to protect the community. Regarding natural disaster support, this is the one that I think is heartfelt because I've spoken to him and I know that he wants to offer the community something here. He wants to offer a place that people can go during natural disasters. He wants to have a way to outreach and to protect the community and provide to them in hard times. We heard earlier about all of the future plans for the disaster, you know, emergency management focus of Manville and I think this goes right in line and this hotel is going to be here for that, that service to the community way before a community center is going to be built if we're all being honest with ourselves. That is in his heart and I do want to say that to people, that serving people is in Yogi's heart. Finally, I just want to bring it all together that I feel like if you look at all of the research that's been done by the city, surveying your citizens and all the meetings and the preparation that has gone in into the vision documents, the surveys, the Manville Today publication, in my opinion, it's very clear that the broader Manville community does want exactly what this hotel represents. They want a highly livable community. They want a wide range of community amenities and commercial services. This hotel is going to be safe and nice lodging for friends and family of residents and it fits those needs. They want a welcoming place for good faith investments in the community and Yogi lives here. He works here. He owns a business here. This is a good faith investment on his part. The city wants to be, the city people in, in these publications want to be open to and likewise be open to constructive community dialogue and feedback. That's what we're all doing here and that's what Yogi wants to. He wants the community to give him feedback and he does want to have them come to him if they want something special or unique about the property or there is ever a problem during construction. He's going to be open to having that conversation with, with the people that especially live in the neighborhood. The people of Manville value safety and disaster readiness and they want engaged residents and business owners. He is a resident. He is a business owner. He will be engaged. He is engaged and he does value safety and wants to help with disaster readiness for Manville. And then one of the last things was that they want a more varied commercial tax base, the people of Manville, which a major brand hotel more than offers. That is a definite variety of tax basis for the community and it's going to be a big tax basis, which is going to provide a lot of opportunities for the city of Manville. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Laura. I appreciate that presentation. So Ms. Laura, Ms. Laura, if you just want to stay up here, some counsel might have some questions for you just in, just in case. And so counsel, I'm going to open it up to see if you have any comments or questions. We'll make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak. I do want to remind counsel, the decision that we're making tonight is not based off of whether or not we like a Marriott or a Hampton Inn or a Courtyard. We have to look at land use, whether or not this is the appropriate land use for this location and that's what we need to hone in on the decision there. So we'll open it up to see if any council member would like to speak first. I think Mayor Pro Tem's looking at me, so we'll give it to Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento first.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Oh, you can, I didn't know.
Yeah, you go, you go first and we'll go Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll go next.
I don't have one.
Go for it. No, you take your time. Please, take your time.
No, I was just wondering, so what consideration went into like this area prior to Yogi purchasing the land? Was it just that it was affordable and he said, hey, they don't have a hotel. Let me put one here. I'm just wondering, like, what kind, was it just, was it merely because financially it was cheaper than going closer to 288 or directly on Highway Six?
Yes. So this one is, yeah, my name is Aniket Patel. I'm a business partner with the Abi family and I'm the family member also. So this location is perfect for the, it is very close to the Highway Six and we are not going, encroaching any of the neighborhood. And this one is like economical based on, based on the other side of the 288 sites.
So it's fair, so it, it was more affordable?
Yes.
But still somewhat close in proximity to 288?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then prior to purchasing the land, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure where Yogi lives. I know he lives in Manville, but is it in this area or is it more in like the newer communities?
It is very close. This is just like a mile away, 9,500 Bissell, Bissell Road, just backside of the railway track.
So as someone who, so I used to live in Blue Water Lakes, which is right next to where the Best Western is, that's located that everyone's been referencing. And I know that in, when I lived there, one of the issues was that they would have visitors essentially that were staying at the hotel, you know, walk into the community and it would make sense because, you know, Blue Water Lakes is right next to it and then there's a lake with a walking trail and Best Western allows animals. So, you know, they have to walk their dog. So they would come into the neighborhood and there were a good amount of times where surprisingly neighbors would find people swimming in the lake. And so I'm just wondering for things like that where obviously you're going to have a wide variety of people that would be staying at the hotel, what are you going to do besides planting trees, you know, for privacy to make sure that they don't venture off into the community?
So there is a lot of land, like tannical land and the two acre is the retention pond and there will be the walkway around it, very nice walkway for the guests and for the local community. If they want to come and just morning walk or evening walk, they can do it. And on the, on the, on the backside of the neighbor, they don't need any business to go the other side. So I, I'm not understanding why they can go inside because everything, they are very close to the.
There's going to be a big walking trail around the retention pond where people can go walk for themselves for exercise or walk their pets.
Okay.
Correct.
It is not shown on that image. I don't have an image of it in the presentation.
Okay. And then some of the amenities that the hotel would provide, it wouldn't necessarily be open to the public. So like a gym or anything like that, you would have to, you know, pay to visit it. So how would that actually benefit any of the residents that live nearby it? Because you were speaking on the amenities.
So, I mean, the hotel itself being an amenity for their guests, for their family and friends, that's the idea, is that, that the people that live here will have somewhere, I mean, everybody has parties. They have events. They have life things that happen where they invite people over. And I know that his kinfolk are going to stay with him, but I think most of my kinfolk, I'd rather them have, be at a motel. So I just wanted to make sure that it was a point that the primary guest at the motel are going to be the people that live here's friends and family. And that's what the amenity is, the hotel itself, is for, is for the people that live here when they have events and parties for people to stay. And, and also the sports. I mean, this is a huge sports town. So there's no doubt that those types of things and even this, the, the Fourth Fest is over, I mean, it's two nights. So all the vendors and everything that come to support the area, this would give them a place to stay overnight whenever they have a two-day event like that's about to go on in a couple of weeks.
And then the last question I have, is there going to be like a conference center in the hotel? Is there some type of a large space or is it just primarily rooms and?
Correct. It's planned, it's planned right now to have conference for business meetings and also a lounge area for smaller business meetings. So people can go and, you know, that are staying for small business events or that want to have, you know, meetings, like even the city, if they wanted to have a meeting there, they could, they could stay. I'm sure he would give you a discount.
How many rooms?
Eighty-five rooms.
Eighty-five rooms? And so what I'm hearing is a pitch to this, to counsel after we have heard every single Manville resident beg us to not allow this in. And so my question is, have you ever gone before a council that was elected by their constituents and every single one of their constituents said, do not do this, and the council agree with the business and not the constituents? Have you guys ever done that? Have you ever presented to a council before?
I have.
The business owners?
Yes.
You have?
Yeah.
And, and the council went against their constituents?
I have.
In which, in which city?
Nermal Gandhi with Gandhi Designs Architecture. I've done over 500 hotels in, just pretty much in Texas alone. I have had it where city of Baytown required it. I did do that.
And the council members voted for it against the will of the public?
Yes. Due to the, because I'm not bringing a, a small little mom and pop shop. You're bringing a Marriott or Hampton or some kind of major brand and yes, it does go that way.
So just for clarification purposes, I'm going to say, I travel Marriott. I'm a Bonvoy member. I love Marriott. I like, not love, the courtyard.
Okay.
You know. However, what studies did you guys do on the front end to justify that that is a space, that that's a, a good return on your investment for a hotel, rather than just, hey, this is cheap land. This is up and coming. It's, it's a block off of Highway Six. But what specific studies did you do to show that it would be a good beneficial, a good benefit for your business?
You have a feasibility study. So we have the feasibility study done. We have asked Marriott person, he can come visit the site first and then they give the approval for the what brand you can put it in.
Okay.
And Mr. Yogi is so generous. He grew up in this neighborhood and he said, I want to give back to the community. This one is not main profit business for this hotel.
Okay, so I can appreciate, I can appreciate somebody that loves our town. I can appreciate someone that has a heart. Intentions oftentimes are one thing, but the consequences are another. And sometimes we can choose to say, my heart is here, but if your heart is truly here, then why do something that the community is begging you not to do? I just, I don't see that. I'm sorry. In addition to that, the other thing that I would beg Mr. Yogi to look at is, everybody has come out and said, we would love a Marriott. I love Marriott. I think Marriott's a beautiful brand. It's a great franchise. You have to go through rigorous inspections to keep it. This is not the location. According to everybody here, I, I would be shocked to see a feasibility study that says that it would be profitable and that that's a great place for it, considering all of the amazing locations or retail property that you have just a mile down the road. The other question that I have for you is, I keep hearing heart. I keep hearing, this is a way to give back. When did the community come and say, this is what we want? Because typically, when a, when a community speaks up and they're begging for something, that's when somebody reaches across town and says, hey, the community wants this. This is a need. What the community is begging for is parks, community centers. I've never heard we need a hotel. Now, financially, absolutely. We could use the tax revenue, would love that. But we could also use the tax revenue if Mr. Yogi looked at his 10 acres and decided to do something else. Eighty-five hotel rooms is not going to be enough during a hurricane. It's not going to be enough during a disaster. It's not going to be enough for my family if we have a quinceañera and we bring all of our Mexican-American family to Manville, Texas. Let's just be real. we bring all of our Mexican-American family to Manville, Texas, let's just be real, they're not gonna all fit there. So I love the passion, and I love the fact that you guys are really, really trying to get us to see the value in that. Unfortunately, I cannot and will not get behind it this time, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other councilman lands?
I appreciate your presentation, and there's several things that we really are looking at here, and I've done some development back in my day, and you know the saying, location, location, location. And I think you mentioned earlier about very close to Highway 6, but this isn't on Highway 6, you do have land on Highway 6. I just don't understand, and I'm, I'm just kinda speculating here that maybe this land was bought by Mr. Yogi, and he then said, what can I do with this land? And he said, I'm gonna put a hotel back in the back. So I think the purchase of the land probably was before deciding to put a hotel back there next to a neighbor, which I, I would not want a four, a four-story hotel in my backyard, I'm sorry, especially someone who's been given the promise ages ago that, that would not be there. We want y'all here, trust me, I would love for y'all to be here, and I'm sure that, that we could, the city could sit down with y'all and give you some different ideas, some different places of plot, you know, to put a hotel, just not here. You know, and Ms. Laura, you did mention that you did a survey or whatever, and the neighbors around there are 1% or less of the population.
I did a survey.
Well, they're 1% of our population.
Right. I understand that.
And I've heard a couple of comments that I would just call bashing our Best Western, it may not be the newest, but it's ours. And I just, we've, we've had people come before us before trying to present a business to us, and they wanna bash somebody else in the process, and that's just not the way to do it, don't, don't do that. I would like to ask, even if it's not at this location, I, I tried to look at your drawing real close, and I didn't see a location, it was kinda hard to read the drawing, I didn't see a location on there for a backup generator. Does Best West, do, do, your hotels, do they put black backup generators on them?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
It is not a requirement, but yes, we are planning to do one this way.
Right. But if you're talking about, you know, community emergency support, obviously you need a backup generator, or there's no support. So I think, I think y'all have heard really strongly from our, our citizens, and you're hearing it from our council, we do want you here, it's just not this location. So don't, don't say, we don't want you, because that's not true. We just don't want it here, because of the, the local residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Bonner, Councilman Oplinger, anything for you gentlemen?
So the proposed location is four tenths of a mile from the new restaurant that we just gave $150,000 to, four tenths of a mile. Just down the street is heavy commercial, right? I, I, I struggle with this, right? It's heavy commercial, and it's transitioned, all of Highway 6 is zoned like commercial. When you, looking at the, what the staff report, so item seven, a minimum of 10-foot-wide landscape buffer, including landscape with at least, with at least one, 3.5-inch caliber evergreen tree planted every 25 feet along the property line, but it's to the residential use zone. So I guess that's behind the hotel, right? Buffering the property, right?
Yeah, we would have a masonry fence, and then landscaping would be in front of it, yes.
Right, and, and is, and did I see it's gonna be a cinder block wall, or is it cedar?
We're, the condition requires masonry, so it could be cinder block or any other kind of masonry fence.
Brick, basically.
All right, the, and so in the design criteria manual, they've, they've met all the requirements, there's no real issues?
So this is the zoning stage, this is the approval of an SUP, so we haven't gotten into a detailed review and a detailed analysis of the site plan and design. However, what's provided generally appears to meet the requirement, however, if approved, the condition would be that whatever modification needs to be made to meet all the requirements shall be made.
Okay, and so, and then for staff reports, that it, here, wait me a second. So the, within compatibility of the, of our charter, it makes it, appropriate location for the proposed use, it's just a great general alignment with the, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan, right? So in the comprehensive plan, this me set was, criteria.
So the, right now, we are going through an amendment to our comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan that we have currently adopted, it doesn't get into a whole lot of details in terms of zoning-related decisions, but the goals and the vision that it provides, one of them is to review, like the report says, I don't wanna quote it wrong, so I will just read it out. So it's, it require, it, it focuses on benefiting from our strategic location by encouraging well-planned quality retail, commercial, and residential development that reflects and enhances our small-town quality of life, and also promoting a strong and diverse economic base that supports efficient, high-quality public infrastructure, municipal services, education, and collaborative governance. So those are some of the visions included in the comprehensive plan, and that is reflected through the current zoning that was adopted, which zones this property as light commercial and not residential. So when staff is looking at it in terms of appropriateness, currently, as it is zoned, you can develop a commercial use without the need for an SUP that goes up to four stories. So looking at it from that perspective is what the staff report talks about, appropriateness of the use.
All right, and then, hang on just a second, the, so, and then the traffic study, right? So when I hear 85 rooms, it's impossible to have 600 cars. Is that, so, so that 600 and some of cars, that's a, from what I was reading in the thing, that's the baseline of a study?
So this, this was not a specifics, site-specific traffic analysis that was done, the, those are the numbers that are given, that are based on the ITE, which is the Transportation Engineers, International Transportation Engineers Manual assumptions, which, which puts together these trip generation numbers for different types of land uses. So that's the number for the hotel use. Based on that, you see if it meets a certain threshold beyond which a site-specific detailed traffic impact analysis is required. Based on our design criteria manual, these numbers do not warrant a site-specific traffic impact analysis based on the ITE manual that's been taken. And the number that you're talking about is a 24-hour number, 300 some in, 300 some out, but then for peak hour, it's a different number based on the land use, based on the type of hotel that is being considered. So staff did look at those numbers, and it, based on our requirement, it didn't reach to that threshold where a traffic impact analysis was required. So just clarifying, a long story short, it's not a site-specific, this hotel-specific study which said that those many cars would be there on a 24-hour day.
Can I comment? It, it said in the report, I, I questioned that too, 7.99 trips per room per 24 hours. I don't know when I've ever came and went for my hotel almost eight times a day, so I was questioning that statistic as well, with an 85-room hotel.
Yeah.
There's no way.
I don't know, the.
And, and those numbers from the ITE manual, they are based on different scenarios, it gives a range, and then there's an average number, so you, you get those numbers from the manual, but when you do a site-specific study, based on the type of hotel it is, based on the status of the roads in the area, you might come with a different number, different result on the traffic impact analysis.
And the, and the developer hasn't asked for any concessions from the city? That I know of?
No.
Yeah, in terms of variance, is that what your question is?
No, financial, right?
No, as far as financial, like the PD and Z, I'm sorry, like the economic development, there hasn't been, they haven't asked for any money.
We did, we did discuss it for the infrastructure, for the large road, because I think you guys, the city wanted to build a bridge and bring all the utilities to that area too, so we did discuss something of that nature, maybe a credit or something, but that hasn't been discussed in detail.
So you may still, if it's approved, you may come back to the, the economic development house?
Maybe, maybe.
All right, that's, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Bonner?
I appreciate your, your presentation, but I've, I've sat here, not only tonight, but at the PD and Z, and I sat out there and listened to all the side conversations that go on, and I, I consider myself kinda close to this, I mean, besides Councilman Uplinger, I probably live the closest, being living down Lewis Lane, so I understand the traffic issue being a lot of the problem, and the disturbance that they think is, and I have no way of knowing, nobody's got a crystal ball, but I can see where that worries them, that there could be that possibility, that there are peaceful walks in the evening, there are kids playing, riding bikes out there, I, I can see the, the thought in their head that that's gonna be danger. I've known, I know several of these people that live out there in the area, I've known David Simmons for, good lord, I'm gonna make myself old, over 50 years. So I, I, when somebody like that talks to me about them being worried, that, that holds a little bit of weight with me, and I think, I would love to see the Marriott Hotel unlike everybody else. I'd love to see it someplace else in the town. I think the city, the boards, and everybody here could get behind trying to incentivize, I'm gonna say this word wrong, to get behind y'all to try and make the property work, but just not where you're trying to do it, and I, I think we have to listen, that's what we all say what we're gonna do when we run for office, we're gonna listen to the people. We, we just can't turn around and, and think that something shiny's gonna make us change our mind about that. So here, here in a little bit, somebody's gonna have to put up a vote, and I, I wanna warn everybody, when, when somebody puts this up for a vote, they've got to, so don't get mad at somebody for putting it up for a vote, because you have to put it up for a vote to vote either way. So I, I really don't want, don't want to make y'all run away from Manville, I'm just saying, it's the wrong place.
Just to, a side comment on Councilman Uplinger, it is on Lewis Lane, but it's, it's not on Highway 6, and the Cantina is gonna be right on Highway 6, where it's gonna take on that traffic, and most people will enter and exit right here, versus having access down Cemetery Road and possibly Lewis Lane and into the neighborhood. And so I just wanted to make that clear, because you did make a, a point, like, hey, we just approved that, but this is not directly on Highway 6. I think had it been directly on Highway 6, we would have, we would be having a different conversation. So, and then to finalize that, I definitely want to just say, we would love to have you, I love Marriott, I said that, just not there, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So just a few comments and questions, thank you guys for the, for the presentation, please, I'm sure Mr. Yogi's either watching this or he'll watch it, so please let him know that we appreciate him calling Manville home and being willing and able to invest his hard-earned dollars, whether this passes tonight or not, this is all zoned as light commercial land, I've had conversations with many other residents, and, and they do understand that this, a 24/7 business could come and open on every single lot, that's gonna probably increase traffic even more than what a hotel might increase. You throw a Chick-fil-A right up there, and it's gonna have a lot more cars in and out every day than what a hotel is gonna have. They under, they understand that, there's a lot of concerns about the hotel with the land use location, but please let him know, we appreciate him being willing to invest his money, thank you guys, with, and all the speakers here for and against tonight, taking time out of your Monday evenings, when many of you have work the next day, we appreciate it, and I wanna express my appreciation to staff as well, you know, you guys don't have an easy job, you know, going through and taking a look at this and giving your recommendations, vetting everything out, it's much appreciated. Kinda two, three questions. It shows your plan, your presentation right here on the screen, shows two in-and-outs that would take traffic off of Cemetery, but you would be required to get text audit approval for curb.
Yes, that's correct.
It's already in the process, because maybe you might get one, I would be shocked if you got two.
One is existing.
One is existing, okay, and the one in the red is existing, so you're gonna be requesting the blue one.
Correct.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough, Joes, I know.
Mayor, the red, the red one is a city right-of-way from what I remember.
Yeah, it shows that, I see that here on the, the map as well, so that's already a city right-of-way, is that the one that already has the curb cut, or is it the one in the blue that already has the curb cut?
No, the blue is the proposed.
Blue is proposed, okay. And how many?
It does meet the distance.
It does meet the distance, okay.
Separation, yes.
It's gonna be tough, even if it meets the distance, it's gonna be tough, tough to get that one. Is there a reason why you guys didn't go the putt approach and you decided to go the SUP approach? I know staff recommended that to you guys, and you guys said no, so I'm curious as to why.
Because I think it requires more of a master planning type of situation, I do not believe that he has everything laid out as if, he wanted to do it in phases, phase one, phase two, that type of situation. I already have phase two going, I don't wanna say what, but hotel would have been the phase one. And he does want to develop all of the land, there's land adjacent as well that he wants to develop, so we're, we're kinda looking into everything, so.
Hindsight's 2020, I wish he would have taken staff's recommendation there. Also, why did you guys choose not to put it right off of Highway 6?
Four-story hotel, more visibility in the back, less in the front, that way we can have a lot more in the front, that has, like you're saying, retail restaurants, that's what are things that he's proposing down.
Yeah, that's what, I had a conversation with Joes, and that's what Joe's thinking was there, was there too, so I appreciate you saying that. You know, as, as I look at this, it's all based off of, of land use, you know, I heard a lot of comments during PD and Z, and even though this isn't a new shiny neighborhood, it is a neighborhood, and the voices of the people do matter, and, and we've been making investments in filling those holes and improving drainage, you know, we just started after a year of work, you know, Public Works team went out there and has proven drainage on, on Mississippi. So we, we hear you, we, we see you, and we're, we're taking action there. I think it's important that when we look at the 20-year strategic plan that we put in place, we don't just pick and choose portions of it, we have to look at it as a holistic thing, and people have said very clearly that they wanna see rural parts of Manville remain rural, and they also, they wanna see development occur, and that's the tough decision that we have to make regarding this and regarding decisions in the future. How do we find that perfect blend? And it's not, it's not easy, a lot of council members have said it tonight, you know, we would love to see a Marriott, and, and we wanna work with you guys on that, but the location's key. One final question here for you guys, you guys are not proposing extending large all the way through. It's gonna dead-end at the end of your property, and then it would be up to the city continuing it the rest of the way?
On the west, or?
Yeah, if you're heading, if you're heading to the west, so.
There's a ditch on the west side, I think we had the conversation with the city, and they wanted to build a bridge, I believe, so.
Okay, but that's not, you guys are not proposing of building that, that would be up to the city, so it would basically be.
To connect it, yeah.
So you're gonna have some street parking most likely there, if it's a dead-end, until it gets built through.
We would, I would, we'll have street parking, we're not putting parking. We're only developing the road because it was, I think it was one of requested by us, by the city.
Okay.
We don't want to develop it all the way to the back, on, on the west side, but it was requested that we connect it all the way to the ditch.
Okay.
Mayor, just a bit of background on that, so constructing large would be a requirement of the subdivision ordinance for this development, one half of it at this point with the hotel, and subsequently, when the rest of the tracks are developed, the other half would be triggered. Now, requirement-wise, they're only required to go to the extent of their property, which includes the hotel and then this detention pond that is shown on the site plan. However, since traffic, as part of the review of traffic, it's, it's valuable or it's necessary, and it, it clearly reduces the impact of. and it, it clearly reduces the impact of traffic and improves connectivity, which would benefit the use. One of the conditions included is that, as part of this project, the design for the connection, the bridge to, and the street construction all the way to where large is right now on the west side, be provided as part of this project, so that city can take it further in terms of construction.
Sounds good. Thank you for that clarification, Joes. I appreciate that. That's all the questions that I have and comments. Thank you, guys. Last council member that hasn't spoken yet, Rossi Knox, do you have anything that you'd like to say or add? Any questions? And then we'll, and then at that point, we're going to call the vote and move forward.
Um, I guess this might be for one of y'all. Is the tree survey, does that come later on in the, in the process? Okay. So, with all due respect, this is Manville. I heard a lot of conversation about other cities, Sugar Land. We have to focus, we're like to buy the Manville citizens, we have to focus on the issues that are here. And I think of the hotel and the traffic and people leaving and going down these, these backroads, that's an unquantifiable damage to the roads and, and the drainage is a problem. And I've heard the, I've heard fire trucks mentioned a few times and I haven't really, I don't think anyone asked that tonight. That's just kind of going by the way. So, that's my concern. I also am concerned by how the PD and Z went. That was a, you know, zero to seven. It was, it was a total knockout. And so, I, I consider all of that and it's just, it's concerning to me. Everyone up here said they're pro hotel. I'm pro hotel. It's just not the right location, so.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, any final comments, questions? No? Okay, so council, to get this going, remember, we have to make a motion in the affirmative. You do not have to vote for your motion. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate you, you being here. I know it's been a long evening, so thank you for taking the time. So, council, I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-0-21. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Oplinger. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails unanimously and then 0 to 7. Well, thank you, everyone, for taking your time. Thank you for being here tonight and for adding your, your voice to the process, whether you were for or against it. We are, are all one community and it's important that we work together. Moving on to agenda item number six, consideration and possible action to approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2025-0-18. We will take a minute for the House to clear. of ordinance 2025-0-18. This may be a quick one. Dan, Joes, what do you, what do you have for us?
Mayor and council, we received word from the developer that they would like us to postpone this discussion.
Okay. Postpone or take no action? What would you guys prefer?
Postpone for now.
Postpone, okay. So, council, with that, I will make, do any comments or questions from council? No? Okay, so, I will make a motion to postpone this agenda item until our next council meeting, our next regular scheduled council meeting. We have a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Now, we're moving. Now, we're moving. We already took care of agenda item number seven. Agenda item number eight, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of board members to the zoning board of adjustment for a two-year term to expire in 2027. Raph Lopez, Martina McNichols, Kim Bickham, Derek Dowmalin, Ron Keels. Tammy, what do you have for us?
So, this is for our zoning board of adjustments. In the last probably two years, this board has had three meetings. It's a very powerful board, but it's a board that only meets very seldom. Normally, we would advertise for these positions to try to get new people to come out. However, there are a few boards that you want people that kind of bypass that learning curve, because they do meet so seldom, but their action ends with that board. It does not have to come back to y'all. So, the recommendation is, the board has worked well together, they've shown up to the meetings and been available for us to have the meetings quickly, that we just keep that same board. And all of them were in agreeance that they'd like to stay on the board.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Any comments or questions from council? Hearing none, do I have a motion for this agenda item?
Make a motion.
All right, we'll give the motion to Mayor Pro Tem. We'll give the second to Councilman Lands. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Thank you to these five individuals for their service and we appreciate their continued service. Last agenda item, consideration and possible action on the appointment of a Mayor Pro Tem to serve for one year. I'd like to start off with saying thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento for her year of service over this past year. You did a great job. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. A little bit of a history lesson here, prior to us having a city charter, the mayor always just appointed the individual that they want without any council consent. When the charter was adopted, it said that the Mayor Pro Tem must be voted on by council. And it's been left up to the discretion of the mayor as to the policy of how this occurs. I do think in the future here, within the next few meetings, it'd be good for us, council, to establish a formal policy for this. The approach that I've taken as mayor is that each member will have an opportunity to serve. I want everybody to have the, the privilege of serving that position, being able to, to lead a meeting if they're not taking vacation to Disney, to Disney World. And so, year one that I was mayor was a former council member, now Hudson, then it was Crystal. And so, it would technically fall to position four for, for this year. But my policy is that, first year on council, you're drinking out of a fire hydrant. There's so much that, that you're learning. To ask you to take on the additional responsibility of Mayor Pro Tem would not be appropriate to, to do that. So, I reached out to Councilman Oplinger to see if he'd be willing to serve. He respectfully declined that position. And so, council, I would like to nominate Councilman Lands to serve in that position if he so is willing to take that nomination. But I do want to open it up for any comments or questions prior to making that formal motion. Do I have any council comments or questions? Hearing none, I will make a motion to appoint Councilman Lands as Mayor Pro Tem to serve for one year. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have the second from still Mayor Pro Tem Sarmiento for one more vote here. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Lands. And Dan, Bobby, Tammy, if we could just find an upcoming agenda to put a note, just to establish a formal policy for that. Technically, next year, it's going to be Councilman Bonner. I'd like to keep with that, but there was a neighboring entity that had some turmoil recently, because they did not have a formal policy. And I think for the future people that sit in these seats, it's important to have a policy in place for that. All right, mayor and council comments, do we have any? I think we'll be getting an updated council photo there soon, so Tammy will be coordinating with our two new council members to get your official council photo taken. Do you want to remind people there's a Coffee and Connections happening in Manville on Thursday morning? I believe it's, is it at the bank or is it Meridiana? Bobby, do you know?
Oh, you're going to be out of town?
Let me see real quick, council, my apologies. But City Hall is closed on Thursday for the holiday for Juneteenth. And the Coffee and Connections, it's going to be sponsored by Meridiana and it is going to be, and it's going to be at Oasis Village, it looks like, down in Iowa Colony, if you wish to attend at 8:00 a.m. That is all that I have. Unless anyone has anything else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We'll get a motion from Councilman Bonner, a second from Councilwoman Robie Robinson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion.